I will turn off the chat.
Take off your hands.
Right, please turn this to chat here.
Yes, you have to turn off the chat and.
In a moment. All right, we are ready to begin. Any people joining us online and in the room? We apologize for the delay trying to get the tech set up. Thank you for joining us, calling to order the October 3, 2023 Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee meeting. We are in business meeting open session begin with public comment. Guidelines for public comment can be found in sections B E D H and B E D H dash E of our policy manual. Is there anyone on, uh, joining us online that would like to make public comment? If so, please put your name in the chat and address. While we're waiting to see if that's the case, would anyone in person like to make public comments? I can know. We see nobody in the chat currently. So we will close public comment. Okay, thank you. Chairperson's report. Okay, I have a couple of things. Thanks to those that would be Chris and Kate who were able to attend the walk through memorial today. I had intended to go but had a child homesick today. We'll attend the others, but thank you for doing that. That is something that we have the opportunity to do at each school and those dates we've already shared. I've spent some time collecting, tracking down and, and starting to go through the superintendent evaluations. We had hoped to have that in time to review tonight, the compiled one, but we extended that deadline. And so now we have them all. And for our next meeting, the 1017 meeting will be ready to have the final for inclusion in the packet. And then the other thing that I'd just like to bring up is I had a question from a committee member at the end of our last meeting, before we headed into the all boards meeting about communication. She had a question about me responding to an email and kind of when we talk about those sorts of things. So I've spent some time in the last two weeks thinking about our processes and how we're going to accomplish all of these things and fit them in the calendar and, and that sort of thing. I think we saw in the packet that we did put some chunk, a small chunk of time as we talked about last time toward goal setting for tonight. So I think what I'm going to propose, and we'll talk about this more later during the goal setting. But what I'd like to propose is that after we get through that process, that we then take that chunk of time, whether it's, whether it's, you know, just replacing it in here or in a separate opportunity to look at our norms, because those kind of communication questions about how we operate are really included. I mean, that's, those are our norms and those are the things that we go through and we read and we adopted those as a committee a couple of years ago. So if we want to revise those, I mean, we up, you know, we update ourselves by reading one each time we meet. But if we want to revise those at all, we can take a process to do that. And so I just wanted to make clear that I do have an answer to that question, that when we do that is when we discuss our established norms that we approve as a committee. So. That's really it for my chairperson's report at this time. Uh, if we could, Kate, could you continue us with our operating protocols? We're on this one. And clearly define success and accountability for the committee superintendent faculty, staff and students. Thank you. That's something that's finally, because it's coming up in conversation as well. So that closes my chairperson's report and we are on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight would be, we have warrants 1015, 1016, 1017 and 1018. We also have minutes for September 19th meeting.
1019.
919.
919, September 19.
Voucher 1019.
Oh, and voucher 1019, excuse me. Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, keep going.
Okay. Did I get that wrong? Is, I'll look at the.
I'm confirming.
Yep.
Apologies.
That's all right. Um, we also had minutes in there, but there were some. So we had minutes for our meeting, but we also have minutes from the all boards meeting.
Yeah, and I may have been confusing in my note. I was thinking that we would circulate the all boards minutes at least once.
Yeah.
Then circulate them among everyone and then bring them back for approval.
Yeah.
I don't know that we're under a time constraint, but.
Right. That was my thought too, that we don't need to vote to approve the all boards meeting minutes tonight. That's just to get input based on it for the first round here. But for the 919 minutes, there were a couple of changes that came in late. So I'm not sure if people had a chance to see that or not. So did people have a chance to see that? When it went out again today?
So when I began today, I think the issue is, um, something's wrong with the, the laptop. Whether it's, whether it's saving or not.
Yeah.
It turned out that the 919 additions that you had noticed in his head were minimal.
Okay.
Almost nothing substantive.
Okay.
And very minimal, turned out to be a couple of words missing or something that I wanted to clarify, but there wasn't really much there. When I went back today and went back through the notes.
Okay.
So you could approve them, but there were some changes that I added them to the all board meeting.
Right.
A little bit more.
Okay. So just to, just to be super, super clear though, you might, I would move that we not. Approve to tonight, the notes from, the minutes from 919, just so that we have a chance to look at what was sent out the final version before we do that. Are we good with that? Okay. All right. So then I, I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda to accept warrants for vouchers 1015, 1016, 1017, 1018 and 1019. And also including out of state travel for October 27th to the 911 memorial and museum as per the notice that we received. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask, I think we talked before about having a bit of an understanding of why the field trip is being requested. I have no problem approving this one, but knowing, you know, is this one class for all students or, you know, the selection?
Do you want, do you want to speak to that at all?
No.
Okay.
We will just have more details next time.
Yep.
Yeah. I just be. I think I know, but not know that I know. So perfectly leave it at, we will have more detail.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have two subcommittee reports tonight. Let's start with negotiation team.
The negotiation team met on Wednesday and very briefly. We are starting to negotiate for our unit B contract and. We pretty much just set a calendar and briefly touched on norms. We're looking forward to going from there.
Great. Anyone have questions for Kate? All right. Thank you very much, negotiation team. Policy program subcommittee, I understand met, who's reporting?
Okay. So.
Everyone.
We looked at our policy list. So when we looked at, I want to quote the summer bucket. We had created a list of a whole bunch of policies and a couple of curriculum related items or educational program related items, I should say. The basically we set a couple of priorities.
Sorry, sorry.
At the top of the policy list is the reserve policy, finalizing that and getting that in place. We have edits to make to the graduation required, graduation policy, which we identified last year. More logistics of where it's housed than we're not changing the graduation requirements. And just to note that. Prior. Iteration of the school committee suspended the mass policy. And we just need to kind of note that in the policy itself. We don't want to strike it entirely because there may be a need for it again in the future, but we want to know that it's been suspended. And then we have, we still have the list of other policies. If we can get to them, we'll get to them, but those are kind of the top priorities. Educational program, top of the list here are. Deciding whether or not we should recommend anything about class size. That's been an ongoing conversation. So we want to explore that a little bit, figure out what issues are at play, at play. And whether or not there's any action we should take and if so, what? And then the other question that's come up is really to, you know, what do we mean by excellent schools? This has come up in our conversation over the past year or so. And, uh, you know, we don't really have a conception or an articulation that we can point to as a school committee. So of those priority is class size. So that's what we're asking your support for. So. The policy and educational program subcommittee recommends and requests your support to work towards these two priorities on the policy. Finalize a recommended reserve policy, update the graduation policy and notate the suspension of the mask policy. And two, on the educational program side, examine the potential need for a class size policy.
All right. So since we work by voice of the committee, we take that recommendation. So would someone like to make a motion? Would you like to move that?
I will move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Thank you. This is very helpful. I would. I think that I take your recommendation about the priorities for the, the policy side of things. Which certainly makes sense on the educational program side. I think some of those things are going to come into our budget, discuss those two things in particular are going to come into our budget discussion. So I'm in support of it, but I also don't want to, I don't want to vote to say this is the thing to move forward on. And then in an hour from now, we decide that we might want to attack that in different ways. So. So that's my. That's my thought.
Is a glass sized policy something that exists in other districts? And has it existed here? I was under the impression that we had recommendations from, from quite a while back. How do you see this playing out between those two models?
Those are the questions we have to present, that, that having it in a subcommittee gives the opportunity to ask those questions.
Yeah. Fair enough. Thank you. So maybe we, I mean, unless there's, you guys were in it. So I'm guessing you're on board. Maybe we could just move forward with this recommendation as it stands. And then if we need to alter the plan down, you know, based on further conversation, we could.
Yeah. Okay. And just, uh, you know, we, we also want to be explicit that, you know, we're a subcommittee, right? So nothing gets decided there. It all comes back to.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the recommendation as stated? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Look at us well ahead of schedule. I like that superintendent's report.
There's a question? Was there a question?
Yeah, I was gonna say that the finance committee we talked about is a last time, maybe take out mine in until he says name and.
Sorry, yeah. Yep. If I do it again, just send me an email. Cause then I'll.
I noticed.
Right while I'm sitting there. I'm gonna make a big note in this notebook right now, but.
I also know myself. I'm going to try. Our tech troubles continue. So I'm going to give it one quick try and put it up. And if it doesn't work, I'm just going to do it verbally to keep us moving forward. No, it just has a hard time converting to a format that can be used on Rebecca. So. This will be posted so people can read it, but just a quick update tonight. Few things just from around the schools, we're getting into October. For those who heard us do a little bit of a debrief from the opening meeting at the beginning of the year. September is kind of a setting the table month. Heavy focus on developing relationships, setting up expectations, routines. So everything is kind of off and running and we're starting to dig in now to some of the work of the year with the teachers. So we really asked the teachers to focus on their classrooms at the beginning, but now you're going to start to hear more conversation about some of our professional development work and ongoing project work in the district. So kind of going on around the schools this week, it's spirit week at the high school. Some nice decades attire today, a lot of flannel downstairs. That seems to be going well. People are in good spirits. Open houses are complete. They all were well attended and I think positive feedback from all of the schools and parent groups on that. And then Heather's here to listen and contribute if needed to the school improvement plan updates. But two big pieces of her work. First trimester data meetings have wrapped, or start wrapping up or wrapped up today. And the. Professional development, my god.
Train of thought already. It's only six o'clock.
The professional development day on Friday is going to focus on our strategic priorities and the message that we gave at the beginning of the year, which is how we integrate S E L cultural competence and the authentic learning pieces together. We kind of previewed that that would be our theme for the year, but we're going to dig in now on. Friday and start to structure that for staff so they can start to see the connections and then offer some opportunities for training related to building those, those integrations. Heather, I don't know if you want to give us a little bit of a color commentary on those two pieces, seeing as you're here?
Yeah, happy to. I'm excited to be able to be here tonight. Um, yeah, the data needs are a great start. We actually had a chance to connect at the elementary level and get grade levels across schools together. And that work has also happened in the secondary levels within their buildings. So it's a really great spot for teachers, both to calibrate with each other and also to really understand for their classes entering and making their instructional plans for the year. As far as the professional learning day on Friday, I'm so excited. We're going to be having the day take place in three big chunks. That first part will actually be the whole district all together here. We're really going to launch and as Pam said, make those, make, make literal those interconnected themes and focus areas for our work for the year. So really thinking about how do you do all of these different efforts that we're doing, connect with each other and lead us all towards the vision of the graduate in that pre K through 12 experience. So that'll be our morning, the middle block of the day, teachers will have some choice. So all the choice is connected to those areas within a strategic plan. And teachers can really lean into where their learning edges and spend some time focusing on cultural competency with Michael Beaton, who's been supporting our work for the last few years and taking that to that next step. How do we apply that in our work, our classes with our students? That second bucket will be through that social, emotional learning and how do we integrate that, those efforts and strategies within our classrooms, led by our S E L coordinator and the school director, Kim Provo. And then that third choice will actually be, how do we create authentic learning environments that all students can access through that universal design for learning structure and then access point? So we actually have a person named Ruth Templeton, who's actually coming to us from CAX, which is a local organization, who were actually the initiator of UDL. So she's actually going to come and watch. What is it? What does it look like? What can we do and help teachers think about what those tools can, how those tools can help support them to engage students in our classrooms across the board, learning. And then the two people have a chance in the afternoon to work with their building leaders around those building based focus leads. So they have a nice chance for us to be all together, have some teacher choice and focus areas and then end up with their building base goals. Really excited and we'll definitely share back out feedback and result of the day.
Um, oh, so that's adult learning for our professional staff. There's also some adult learning coming up for our parent group. We have the first of our education series with Elizabeth Englander is back. It's going to be a virtual webinar next Thursday night from six to eight. I know Joanne will be pushing out the link. At the, at the beginning of next week and the focus is going to be managing social media and the adolescent brain. We have Elizabeth kind of on a two-year cycle. So sometimes we actually are in two years in a row. But typically she's rotating for us and her expertise is she started the mass bullying aggression center many years ago. So she's always been on the forefront of. Behavioral issues for students around bullying and really is a great consult in terms of how social media and technology interplay with some typical student behaviors and amplify some of the situation. So I know she's a favorite and we're excited to have her back next week. Just back to around the schools, I lost my train of thought because I put things on two different slides. Also, I wanted to let everyone know that part of our, part of one of our commitments during budget season last year was to look at schedule alignment between the middle and high school. Let me just click that up. And Joanne and Julie will be working together. With the deans, Liz and Kim to launch school-based middle, high school combined. Teacher committees to start to investigate the situation. I think we see the work happening in two phases. So I just want to be really clear at that, about that at the outset. We see a phase one and a phase two of this work. Phase one is the, the short term, can we align what we have now? They each have a variation of a rotating drop waterfall schedule, six periods at the middle, seven at the high. They basically do the same things, but they don't align line up. So you can't work between two buildings and carry partial class loads at either. So that kind of eliminates unless you work strictly in one of the block blocks, which is either the me or the you. You can't really, it's very hard to create a schedule that allows someone to, to seamlessly work between the two. So we see some opportunities potentially in world language for six, 12, six, 12, music and potentially in some of the arts. And then depending on how schedules fit or don't fit, there could be some. Content area up and down, although I don't see that on the media horizon, but they will see a lot more things that I don't. So the first is how do we align it in our their efficiencies to be had in just the alignment of the day? Second phase, a little bit further down the line, I think will be a more in-depth look at whether or not the schedule concept that we have now fits where we want to be three, five, 10 years out. What's new? I mean, this was fairly new to us. I think it's only about seven or eight years, maybe 10 now old, but. There was a lot, there's a lot of buy-in to this schedule. It's going to be a long process to change direction with it. I think the feeling is that it's good for students. It's good for faculty for a couple of different reasons. Nobody is ever at the same, no one has first block every day, all the time. No one has last block every day, all of the time. So do these assumptions, do these benefits? That's just one example. Still hold now and will they hold with where we're going in the future? So step one, what can we do now? From an efficiency perspective, step two, once we've kind of. Gotten through our budget issues and started to make headway in some of our strategic priorities. What should a schedule look like to meet our needs later on down the line? So that's where we're at right now.
Pam, am I remembering correctly that there was something that you did last year that addressed some type of alignment between middle school and high school?
We just talked about it.
Just talked. I thought there was a minor change or stuff we had made in that direction, but not so much.
They were, one of the things that we've done is. Because the music is offered during those stationary blocks, we have both our music teachers, the chorus teacher and the band teacher teach six through 12. The music, they both have some course load of general music at middle school, but then their locked blocks for band are during the me and the you with another piece of the coursework for both of them happening after school with jazz band and sound waves. So it's kind of a hobbled together. I think the goal is if the day lines up more, there's opportunities in every block to, to work. So we're not looking to upend either schedule or change what it does for course offerings, but we are looking to make sure, see if we can align the times.
Wasn't it a health teacher? I think at some point you mentioned about combining the middle school and high school, the health person. Is that what you're thinking about?
We thought we were going to have a leave and one of the ways we were brainstorming, managing it was to try to see if we could make some matches between P E.
Do you have a timeline in mind for phase one of the project?
Yes. They need to know any changes by January. Because scheduling is going to, the program of studies comes for approval, usually the first meeting in January. And then they start into scheduling and setting up for scheduling in February. And I think. Julie and Liz have scheduled in, Julie's scheduled in power school and in other districts, but this will be your first time in Aspen. So I want to, I want to make sure she has as much time as possible. I'm not, I would hesitate to put a date on phase two just yet. I probably just, I mentioned that there's a teacher group by contract. We have to have a teacher committee giving input and depending on what the outcome. I don't anticipate outcomes of this schedule alignment will have impact on working conditions. But this next phase, I would say would likely be a multi-year process to get to something because. If there isn't, I'm not saying that there will be, but if there were an assessment that said, we want to go to blocks, I'm just, yeah. Go to blocks or go to a flexible schedule or have a night session in a, in a morning session. Anything of that magnitude would constitute working conditions changes and we'd have to either go to the table or at least get their buy-in. So phase one is really based on efficiency. And then just two other quick notes. If there aren't any more questions on the schedule, we can, you know, talk a little bit about this again next session because Julie and Joanne will be here. Individual student scores should be out to homes beginning of next week, could be sooner. And our annual assessment review will be on November 7th. So from here, we're going into our, just like we explained last year, school-based process of analysis. The school-based process of analysis comes up to district level, gets all merged together for our one presentation on the seventh, which will be a joint presentation by all of the leadership team. So like last year, we'll try to focus on the high level. What we've identified strengths, weaknesses, next steps with the appendix being some of the data that we're collecting supportive. And that is it for tonight, except if you had any comments or questions about. I provided you with an enrollment update. So again, stamp it. We're, we still have not filed our formal October one report and. I know it should be simple, but we were going name by name because we were off one student in one grade and one student in another grade from our first reporting and we couldn't, we needed to figure out who it was.
Did you find the students?
We did. We did. And sometimes at this point, it's just a, a, a data entry mistake. You put in the wrong graduation year and it places them in fourth grade instead of fifth grade. So we've had a couple of flips like that. Sometimes you have later registrations, somebody didn't put something in the system. So working through all of that now, there isn't any substantial change. I would say more refinement of things like you'll notice we, on, on the master sheet, we've now broken out pre K by. Residency, which wasn't working out on the first sheet. So we'll keep going with our iterations until we have the final number. And the reason we make the big deal about the final October one number, because that becomes, it plays an important role in budget here. Because it's the basis for key components of the portion. So what I thought we would do this year, instead of doing all of the grade levels together, seeing as the elementary principals are here, just a quick snapshot of what elementary is looking like for class size. So you've got the big sheet that's more of the budget sheet that just shows you the breakout of school choice, out of district, residence, et cetera. This is kind of, the attempt here is to show you how it plays out at each building in terms of class size. So you're starting to see the impact, I think, of the reduction of heads that we've taken over time, where we don't have three classes of 15 and 17. We've got one now, 14 strategically placed and the rest are starting to bump up to or go over our class size benchmarks. The hanging S there. Sorry about that. To Kate's comment earlier, the class size benchmarks. Are inherited from many, many years ago. They are codified on a piece of paper, but it's all pipe written paper and it, we don't have a long chain of how we got there. But I think it was probably a conversation similar to where hat, what we're having superintendent came in, made a recommendation to school committee. And this is his recommendation that stood for a very long time. So. You know, we're not, we're committed to that and this has been our guiding. This has kind of been our compass for a long time. So I think it's a conversation if we're going to make some changes, but you know, maybe now is the time to make those changes. But if we're using that as our guidepost, we are starting to push up against it a bit. At the memorial school, the other thing I noticed is that we are up over last year at memorial, you know, not a ton, but we're up a few heads in total. We expanded pre K to a third section this year. So our pre K numbers are up. Just as a reminder, the pre K expansion was funded through a community compact grant through the state, which promotes and support regionalization efforts. That allowed us to invest in an expansion of pair pal access by bringing on a new teacher at no cost to the district. And giving us a year to collect fees because it's a fee-based program, build up a revolving account to support that teacher. Once the grant runs out, it was a two-year grant. So next year we're going to need to solo. But we have seen the, because we've made some changes in time accessibility. We've seen that pair of health program grow to the point where we now have a third section. And I think I'm hoping for the fourth because our prediction and our, our hope when we were building the building was that we'd be able to fill four pre Ks. And we'll see where the numbers go. So I think it's building a good pipeline for us, getting kids into the system and into routines and starting with some general curriculum early is always a help, we think gives them a leg up into the kindergarten year. So that's a positive. And I know we walked around that we have some classrooms that are, that it's tightening a little bit, but I think it's manageable. You've got the principals here. So you can ask them some questions when they're presenting about the impacts of this. But what I'm trying to illustrate here is last year to this year. We had three sections. Three grade levels at which we carry three sections now at, at the memorial school now. Three grade levels at which we carry three sections. Now at the memorial school, now we are down to just one section. So that is showing you the elimination of two positions that we achieved for retirement, meaning we didn't have to lay anybody off, but we did prep those positions. And we're starting to see a little bit, I would still say it's balanced. If 20 is the average class size at memorial and 19 is the average class size at Essex, we're not too far apart there, but you're starting to see how it's playing out in the classroom. And that's just enough.
Ask a quick question on that. So regarding the, the pre-K with that, with that being a two-year grant, are we on target for that being able to be self-sustaining next year? Great. That's my only question on that. All right, any other questions?
I have, I have questions, but I, but they're really for the principals about how this is impacting them. So shall I save it?
And we'll run through middle and high school next time. So they're here to answer any impact questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excellent. All right. Then we are on to continued business. So we have our elementary school improvement plan progress reports. Sheila and John, would you like to join us? You're welcome to pull up chairs and just join us right at the table or however you want to do this. And they already know, we, we know from our packet, we're roughly working at about 45 minutes on this section of the evening. So let's, let's keep our eyes on that as well.
And I have the PDF version that we had at the end of last week, unless you have something more current, I'm going to throw it up.
All right. Well, thank you for having us. Nice to see everybody. We're just having a school visit today and just the different aspects of the building. Yesterday, we actually had the building committee, I think, went up from track four. They're using the same architect and they were very, very envious and they were having, they were talking about topics that we used to talk about at memorial like mold and those sorts of things. So it was nice to kind of be on the other side of that. You know, to show off our, our, you know, a neighborhood district was pretty neat. So we're going to kind of go through our different strategic initiative areas. We'll each take you through a couple of different pieces of it, kind of let you know where we are with our goals and what we see coming up this next year. This is my first time presenting, needing readers.
It's a theme this year, I think.
Yeah, it happened that the crossing the bridge ceremony last year. So I'm not used to the up and downs. So we're going to start off with strategic initiative one.
You need to be, like Pam, you're not doing your job.
It is nice having this. So one of the, the big projects that we embarked on starting last spring kind of kicked into high gear this fall and throughout this year and next year is the EAS process for, for elementary schools. So it's something that's new to us. She and I have participated together in some trainings to get ourselves set up for that. We have small subcommittees that are coming together. A lot of the work that happens is, is done by staff led by us, but some is led by staff as well to do some of the writing and collection of artifacts and that sort of thing. So we're in that process. We're about to take the next step of training where the teacher leader will be trained with us on some more of the kind of intricacies of the, of the process. We need to work on the application. That's kind of still in process. We have some trainings that we're going to go to outside of the district as well. And then we'll be hosting a second visit where the EAS will come out and kind of kind of cross-check what we've submitted in terms of our evidence with what, what actually happens in their life in the building. Another thing, we talked a lot about authentic learning. And so our kind of point in that process is assessing authentic learning in our schools. So we worked together, we brought our staffs together into focus groups to come up with a common elementary definition of what we believe authentic learning is. So that's been developed. The next phase from there is to take a look. Elementary schools just kind of by nature are, are very authentic, very hands-on, kind of very real world learning. So we want to take an audit of the things that we are doing that would, that would be considered authentic learning. And then we can kind of backfill from there and expand. We both have one large project that we're working on together with our staff. So we're mixing that. So there's more to come. Another big piece was our MTSS model. So historically, the two elementary schools had their own RTI models. Last year, we worked really hard to kind of bring the two staffs together and merge our two RTI models into one congruent memorial. Essex, so we are a state elementary MTSS model. So that model is now fully in place. We have our literacy and math specialists working together, led by Heather, to look at district-wide data. Form groups of students that, that need some additional support in those areas. And then kind of track the data as we go on, go on throughout the year. So that is something that was two kind of totally different machines that were working simultaneously and somewhat similarly, but also aspects were very different. And now they're completely congruent, which was a great, a great achievement there. So we're kind of going forward, continue to assess the model and, and uphold some of the more, more minor intricacies of it. You know, some of the, the communications and that sort of thing that, that we go through. Another piece was when we adopted the iReady program. There's a, there's a component, excuse me, called My Path. So basically the program will take the students' data, their performance data, and then we'll design a learning path of either remediation or enrichment based on kind of where they are in different skills. So that's something that we, the classroom teacher piloted last year. We started having this pilot with a handful of students and what we noticed was those teachers wanted to just kind of expand it, have grassroots naturally with more and more students. So this year, we want to take a look at the effectiveness of My Path and how it is impacting soon performance and soon achievement. So one of the things we've been working for a couple of years now is to get to a common articulated curriculum between the two elementary schools in all subject areas. So a goal area that we had was to start off with just curriculum journaling. So just kind of capturing what is being done in each classroom, in each school, in each subject. So kind of start at that point. We very quickly transitioned from that to having the two staffs work together last year to develop family curriculum guides. So we, we have the first trimester family curriculum guide created for all grade levels and specialists. That went out in published form at open house. It's posted on our website. We have QR codes around the buildings. So people can access that easily. The next step from there is to just kind of polish trimester two and three. They're, they're mostly complete, just some little details, pictures and that sort of thing. And it means there was, it was originally available at each semester as well. The next phase from there is to create pacing guides. So one of the goals this year is to create a pacing guide. We're going to start with ELA. So a common pacing guide between both schools. So the three teachers from both schools will get together and they'll kind of sketch out roughly in different time periods, what work skills and knowledge will be assessed so that we have consistent experience going K through five as one of, as the middle school. After that, we'll, we'll go back to the other subject areas. Another big thing that we've worked on last year and we're continuing to kind of fine tune was the grade five to six transition. One of the challenges in a regional school district is that, you know, you have these two separate worlds that come together here in sixth grade. And so how to kind of make that smooth, you know, there are a lot of things that, that take place, but we still, you know, years later, we still hear about, you know, when the kids get to the middle school, it's, it's like kind of almost starting all over again. So we wanted to do a little bit more of an in-depth transition into building between the two fifth grade classes. The big, the big project that we did there was the combined fifth grade musical between the two schools. So it's a, you know, it's a long time tradition in Manchester. It was in place at Essex years and years ago. And so we decided to do it together. So Tyler Garofalo, who's been the director of the fifth grade musical for, I think, as long as I've been here, we're close to it. She decided that she would, she would take on the challenge. I have no idea how. She, she pulled this off, you know, it's, it's, it's challenging. You have, you have kids in one school, in one town, kids in another school, another town, and they have to rehearse a lot to put, to put on a, a performance of the magnitude that she does. So she had a schedule where she would have practices there, practices here, the kids would learn the music in music class at both schools. And then the week before she had this kind of intensive boot camp of combined rehearsals here at the, at the middle high school. So we bussed the kids over and they worked together that last week leading up to the, the performance. And, you know, watching the performance, you have, I would have no idea that that's how it was put together. I mean, it was, it was incredible. Having that many more kids, just the energy, you know, the parent support and all the planning that goes, goes into it. It is a fundraiser that, that we use for some of the fifth grade activities when we bring the two, the two schools together for some more team building. So what we, what Sheila and I did this summer was we, we got together and we talked about like all of the different things that we have been doing for team building and then kind of what's a streamlined approach that, that we can put in place. So we met with parents from both schools and teachers from both schools. And we laid out, you know, a, a kind of a nice plan. So you have the musical, which is a big piece. And then they do a combined field trip into Boston where the three schools go in for a field trip to Boston. And then a district sponsored event, which is Project Adventure Day over at Emery Farm, where kids from both schools get bussed over and do all kinds of very cool project adventure type things, actually not type things, project adventure activities over there that are just a bigger magnitude than what we could do here on campus. So that'll be the plan going forward for, for that transition. Project Adventure, when we built the new building, there, there was, there was a kind of an equity conversation in place around the curriculum of Project Adventure. Essex has a lot of high elements. The old memorial school did not have the kind of a high, bigger magnitude elements. So that was part of the building project. Our phys ed teacher and some other staff were trained last year in Project Adventure to kind of get us up to speed with where Essex was with that. At this point now, we're kind of looking forward with Project Adventure in terms of, you know, what elements do we want to have at both buildings? There are some of the higher elements that are a little more challenging to install and maintain an access and, you know, if you kind of get your bag for your buck there. So their consultants are working to kind of come up with what they feel in 2023 would be a good, a good package for both schools. Community partnerships. It's funny, one of the things that I'm most proud of, I, I can't even, I can't even say that it was my thing. I kind of hooked my, my wagon onto Sheila's, Sheila's idea with the open door food truck. And it was incredible. So we have a food truck that goes around to all of the schools each month. And it's, it's the most interesting concept. It's a, I mean, it's a food truck that's open to everyone. You know, fresh fruits, vegetables, eggs. They have grocery bags and it's, it's this little kind of pop-up market. At Memorial, they park it right next to the, the big playground, ready dismissal time. So when the kids are leaving, it's like, it's the most adorable thing. They're like, oh, my mom says we eat eggs. I'm so excited. I go home with eggs. I mean, they go home with these big bags of fruits, fruits, vegetables and eggs. And it's, it's been really great. They've been around to all the schools. So we have that schedule again for this year. And that was a great partnership with them. Actually really like boosted morale, you know, staff will go out and they'll, you know, they'll get things and yeah, it's been, it's been a great, a great addition of community. Safe routes to school, so bike and, and walking safety. We have training that happens. We have awareness days and that sort of thing. So that's another partnership that we continue to foster. And then we're always looking for other opportunities for community partnerships. We've got some ideas and things that are kind of coming together. You know, our PTOs obviously do a lot with that as well. So let's keep it committed.
So the strategic initiative for the district, number two, is really all around social emotional learning and incorporate that into all aspects of the day. And our goals related to that are really supportive of the broader picture of trying to make sure that we're sensitive to the needs of all students. The social, the social emotional learning leadership model was a model that was proposed last year. I think you were involved in that conversation of expanding the, the kind of continuum from kindergarten through or pre-K to grade eight. And putting some leadership over top of that to kind of make sure that we're, we're common in the places that we're common, that we have the resources we need in the places we need resources. And also there are representatives from memorial as well as Essex that are part of that team. So they're kind of this or leadership team that help checking the teachers, support what they may need, collect data on what we're doing and how effective that is. And where we may need to provide some additional supports. That gets to go. We have them come. Is leading that and we had, she's already talked with our team at the last release that we had, and she is part of Friday's PB day. So we're excited to get that monologue rolling. The instructional plan we adopted several years ago, Ruler, was as a tool for some lessons and some planning that we did around social emotional learning. And that in the summer of last year, there was a group that got together and worked on creating lessons and a scope and sequence of those lessons that were then shared across both buildings and with all the grade levels. And throughout the year, we shared in professional development, different ways that teams were using it. Different situations that would come up, we would talk about them in faculty meetings and how best to support that work, to support that work and build the use of those tools into the culture of the school. So really perspective-taking. You know, little social justice compensations for harm done, those types of conversations were part of the broader collective of how we handle issues that might arise for students. That, part of that led into the very discreet scheduling of a social emotional learning block where that instruction was going to take place last year. We implemented that, we tried that, but we got feedback actually that fed into this year's schedule. And the feedback on that was that it was a little too prescribed for teachers. It felt really unauthentic. You weren't able to necessarily work it into after the recess, you know, period when there was an issue out there or morning meeting on Monday when something might have happened in the world that kids wanted to talk to. So we've made some adjustments in that this year. It's not as prescribed while the expectation is the same about lessons and carrying out those, the, the scope and sequence that had been created. We're, we are we're trying to shift it into an authentic use of that material within the context of the day for students. So it can, the conversations can come up naturally within the problems that are happening among friendships or among the lunch table or some kind of thing like that. We do have left on our plate this year, ways that we're going to measure and assess those SEL supports and those tiered supports. So what do we do about the child who can't take that perspective or cannot give us perspective and year after year keeps running into problems with identifying the needs of others or kind of stepping into a mess and not being able to get out of that socially. So how do we, how do we measure that? How do we collect that data? And then what are those tiers of support that look like for that student? So that's on the plate this year. And that's part of that SEL leadership team is going to be leading us, collecting data and working us through that. And then our family engagement in SEL was really about shared language. So we wanted to be sure that if we were talking to kids about taking a better moment or they're moving, that parents weren't at home thinking, I don't know what you're talking about. So within the context of our newsletters, classroom newsletters, our conversations at open house, things like that, charter development, we, we involved our families and our communities in that language through the sharing of all of that stuff. And in our responsive classroom, kind of language usually things will be highlighted, at least trying to discern. And sharing the tools also with parent groups. So when we talk about using the blueprint process, what might have happened in the situation, the parents also understand. Speaking of climate and culture, which are just so integral to making sure that students feel a strong sense of belonging in the school that they're in and socially safe. Speaking of climate and culture, which are just so integral to making sure that students feel a strong sense of belonging in the school that they're in and socially safe and comfortable. There are school wide charters, there are classroom charters, you've seen those posted around, if you've been in open houses and there's school wide charters. That we developed both through family surveys, trying to get information from families as well as kids doing that in the classroom about how comfortable. What they need to feel comfortable. We've done it with our staff, we have staff charters. And it's through that feedback that we often start those conversations for SEL, if someone's not feeling happy or safe. Feel like they could do their best in the environment that they're in. So it's a great place to start. And then there was some responsive classroom. These are all approaches and strategies that you would use to build those sense of. That strong culture and that sense of community. And last year, there was a teacher that was trained in that and was sharing some of those practices throughout. Objectives faculty meetings and other opportunities to share with staff. If we move on to strategic initiative three, which is really around creating and celebrating an inclusive and diverse culture. That really recognizes contributions and uniqueness of everyone. It flows very nicely from the SEL work that was involved too. And really it was it it. Many of these items in this particular goal set are about being reflective about our own practices, our own language, our own materials that we put out there. In our own approaches. So you can see that we we have always ongoing and it should always always be ongoing, a representation representational audit. Well, how do we say things when we have our notices and how do we, what's in our letters? And as Pam mentioned, having print material that's very, very old and, you know, not online, we have a lot of those materials around. And it's time to take a good look at the language that's in those and to make sure that it's inclusive and represents everyone. So we are constantly looking those over. You would probably notice as parents that we do a lot of those. Seem to be on our thing and we're working those a lot. We do run a program in third, fourth and fifth grade. It's called Understanding Our Differences and Allison Collins had brought that to the district. It was really about highlighting particular disabilities at different grade levels. So the kids get a perspective taking of what it might feel to deliver someone else's shoes that maybe had different challenges, different. Barriers to learning and that we we bring in people, it raises awareness, there's empathy there. But also I think it reiterates that we all have a sense of belonging and need to feel a sense of belonging. And we all come from challenges and barriers to reading ourselves. We continue to do, our wonders program is a reading program and within the context of that, there are diverse characters in there. We continue to share that at the beginning of the year to remind people to move those stories around and not always use standard stories. But maybe don't have a strong representation of all the people that live in the world today. And last year, we were really excited to use some software to start looking at classroom libraries and. We, there's free material now, you put the books in, out pops up a really representation of who are your main characters? Who are your groups represented? Who, where are your gaps? And and where are there reading materials that are really just no longer appropriate? You know, a lot of favorites of parents are no longer appropriate. Look at back at them now and you consider what's in them and the message they give. A little scary, but it's time to get them off our shelves and get them out of there and not. I know we had conversations at Essex about not just giving them away to a school that might be less fortunate. Because if they're not right for us, they're likely not right for that either. So it it becomes a very interesting conversation where we're really deeply analyzing the materials amongst amongst ourselves and each other. And that should lead us.
Well, so Sheila and I are very tough creators on ourselves. We we went through each each initiative, each goal, and we kind of took a look at, you know, what are the things that are completely one hundred percent complete? And what are the things that are in progress and on track? And what are the things that are in progress but maybe delayed for whatever reason? And we were happy to see that. We don't have anything that is in progress but delayed. And most of the things that we are working on are in progress and on track. So if it's, you know, ninety five percent complete, we would we would score that as being in progress, on track, not not completed yet. So I think we're in a really good place to be able to, at the end of this year, have all of those things that we started to communicate it. So impressive for us.
Anything that you're, I don't think you're struggling with time. Is there anything financial that's holding you up? Most of your things are not necessarily financially.
Yeah, so school improvement fans are, you know, they're collaborating with our. Our school councils. And so one of the things that we have to kind of remind our school councils is that we don't have like a school council budget for school improvement. So we try to say that, you know, kind of what we issued by changing practice and culture and that sort of thing. So much, oh, we want to bring in this new, you know, programming program that costs X. Yeah.
But to Pam's point and maybe just something to think about moving forward, I I would be really interested to hear that. If your school council is pushing back and saying like, this is what we actually think our students need. This is how we think we make our school better. Obviously, I'm glad you are staying within budget.
Yeah.
But another part of our goal is to understand what our different schools need to to be the best they can. And if I can ask a question, well, I want to.
Can I add?
Yes.
So that is the question and the concern that's come up around the classroom book audits. So we're getting rid of books, but we don't necessarily have a big budget to backfill newer books. And there's some question about how much is enough, right? We used to do big book rooms and we'd spend a lot of money on those and now we're throwing out a lot of that because it just doesn't. As times change, we're not very fluid in schools. So but there has to be some middle ground there about backfilling now some of those.
But I think Erica makes a great point, which is that we at school councils. I'm sure our school councils would love to have a conversation about class size as as one example. And we kind of put that to the side because. You know, we want to, we want to set goals that we can actually, you know, make progress on. But those, you know, those topics might be.
And that was actually going to be my follow up question is, thank you for your presentation and thank you in particular, having raised the kids that went to. Memorial. Before this level of collaboration was taking place, it's really, it's great to see this. It's, I think, everybody wins. But my question is, when I looked at the enrollment data that Pam circulated at Memorial, I think there are now four grades that are above. Benchmark and as Pam said, the benchmark would, you know, has just been in place and we don't have a lot of research today, maybe. But you guys are the authorities. I mean. Is is it beyond benchmark in terms of your ability to deliver education? How are you feeling in the buildings right now?
Yeah, I would say anecdotally, over the course of the years, when we were able to have. Particular class in the neighborhood of eighteen students. The kids just get that much more attention. You know, the climate in the classroom is more positive. We have that smaller class size, you know, eighteen compared to twenty five. Let's say, you know, we walked into a classroom, say the kids weren't in the room, but just the desks and it was like, oh, this is. This is pretty full. And then you put the bodies in there and the emotions and the needs and, you know, it's just. When you, when you get up over. Up over over twenty, you're just, you're just, you're spreading that to your so much more than so that the the teacher. You know, he or she is, is, you know, more exhausted at the end of the day and. Feels like they can't get to everything that they want to get to and every student that they want to get to. You know, when when you look at the students in classes with smaller class sizes, they're they're happier, they're more connected, they're, you know, they're seeing, they're heard. It's a reality that we live with, but I think, you know, if I look back historically at the classes of, you know, twenty four, twenty five and the classes of. You know, in the neighborhood of eighteen, I think it certainly is not favorable. And the outcome is much better in a smaller class size.
I think it's very clear that there is a correlation between your teaching effectiveness and the size of the class. And we talk a lot about differentiation and about getting meaning kids what they need and, you know, identifying all of that. And at some point, this is what we just can't effectively to jump point, get to the, for students or you can't. You can't hone that instruction enough for the fifteen that needed you, you know, twenty five need you, I think. So it it starts to get a little more generalized in a way that we've moved away from over years and and that forces you that because you just can't do it.
John, can you speak to? How the size or maybe the spam, I don't know, the size of the classrooms at Memorial? How did we land on on that size? Was that based on predicted class sizes?
What were they designed for?
Yeah, so well, it's a formula through NSBA of square footage for for each. It's not necessarily, you know, oh, in this town, they typically have the class size of fifteen units, but this, you know, so. This district typically have a class size of thirty, so their classrooms are going to be bigger. It's more of a generalized formula across the state. I'm not sure what the exact numbers, I know it's a square.
We did have to submit our benchmarks, so the benchmarks were submitted to them, but. It was formulaic.
Yeah.
I mean, if we would have wanted to go beyond what they would reimburse for, we would have had to.
Right. Are the classrooms at Memorial smaller than they are at Essex Elementary? And you could, I was in the, for people who were not on the tour today, I was in. This fifth grade classroom that didn't have students in it, but the classroom was full with twenty four desks. And once the classroom is full, you have no breakout space. So you you can't send a small group to work on something on the rug. Because there is, there is no rug, there's no space.
Yeah.
You have some great breakout space in the hallway, but now we don't have a teacher who's able to pop in on those groups. So it was notable.
We'll see that here too, because this was also built in around seventy oh seven, oh eight, oh nine. But the classroom space here is on the smaller side. So it's just something to keep in mind too. But your older building has the older.
Just as as a student, if you're in a class of thirty or a class of, you know, twelve, just to be extreme. In a class of thirty, you might, you might kind of get lost in the shuffle, your lesson page. But there's twelve, you know, like at this table here, like everybody's fully engaged because it's such a small table. If you tripled this table, you know, each person is engaged, you know, that, you know, that increment less. So, yeah, I mean, we both advocate for.
Not classes of twelve though, for anybody listening.
If you start says fifteen, I would like, I would say eight, for whatever reason, it's like eighteen is a a a good reasonable man. Being kind of small. You know, we have, we have fourteen in first grade. Right now, it's it's a little small, you know, making groupings and that sort of thing. It's, you know, it's it's harder to find, you know, groups that kind of go together if you get too too small.
So I will say, Kate, that we actually made a purposeful decision in the design of Memorial to reduce the class size to create hallway breakout space. So that was a purposeful decision. So there may be kind of culture considerations we need about having students out there and who's responsible for them. But that was a purposeful design decision to allow for that for the building in the public. So just just to note that.
Actually, that was it. That was a question that Hamilton, one of the folks asked a lot because we, when we went through, the day was just starting. So the kids were all in morning meeting and they were in the breakout spaces in the hall. And I thought, oh, it's really nice that you have those, but it looks like they're not being used. So I'm like, oh, just give me like an hour. And they're, I mean, you know, the it's, you walk through the halls and there's, you know, all those spaces are full of kids, which is, which is great. Yes.
Sorry Jake was asking.
I want to echo the sentiment. Thank you so much for collaborating. It's clearly a significant shift from what we had a couple of years ago. So I want to acknowledge that. A couple, I think, quick questions. Is the authentic learning definition shareable yet or is that still?
Yeah.
I mean, that'd be great to see.
You know, it was, it's actually in a slide deck that we did for last June. That we just never got a little sidetracked.
Yeah, I have the reason, any of your different reasons. Yeah. Yes, that's all actually teed up and shareable.
Okay, great. And same thing with the curriculum guys. I can't find those on the site. I'll follow up with you.
Yeah.
Figure out where those are. Can you talk a little bit about the relationship of the curriculum journaling to the curriculum review cycle? When I first heard about curriculum journaling, I thought it was in the context of the review cycle, but this sounds more like it's documenting what you currently do. What's the relationship or or how are we thinking about both of those things about?
I mean, Heather, I'm sure you can jump in, but but I can say that. The cycle, I know, is up, was up for science and we're looking at that. But I'm going to argue that particularly in light of. What we were looking at for recent elementary schools, that we need to take a look to look at that foundational ELA first. And figure out what we're missing. Writing comes up a lot and and the analysis of it's that. The 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 light will be so critical. We need to talk about that council last night for Essex around that. And. But in reality, it's a little unclear. That pacing guide was going to be really impactful. Whereas science may not in this moment be placed. So I know that's not your cycle, but but that, but that is hard to come.
Yeah, so I would, I would pull the difference between the curriculum journaling or, you know, that idea of. Creating memorializing what we do is really, the audience for that is really our staff. So when you're thinking about that, that pacing guide of when are we teaching these these, you know, different units or focus areas? That will actually lead us to more detailed curriculum maps that are really for the staff to be able to think about. You know, within this unit, what are those shared experiences that we want to preserve that all students have access to regardless of which teacher or classroom or school they're in? And then also what does that experience then look like vertically? So as I'm going K five, I can see what did that experience look like? So that that documentation and that commitment to calibration across building levels that give us that horizontal and vertical articulation. So that there's really a coherent experience. That's really that that curriculum journaling or mapping. And that's the work that we're focusing on this year. We're really teed up at the elementary to focus on ELA. Because with that, with a new tool adoption, sometimes you're just learning, how does this work? What do I have? What do I not have? So the view here is both to become really fluent with the tool and to to implement those components in their classroom. So now we're really memorializing one of those shared experiences that we want to protect for all to build that coherent experience. The curriculum review is a little different. So when we're thinking about, how do we, as a district, think about, what is our curriculum? What we're looking at? For example, this year, we're undergoing a curriculum review cycle in history, social sciences. So we're looking at that K twelve experience of what do the standards say? What are we responsible for? What do we know we currently have in our district? What are, you know, practices, curriculum resources, training assessments that we have? Where are there areas that are really well aligned? Where do we need to consider next steps? And the outcome of that curriculum review cycle can lead to recommendations. It might be a curriculum material adoption and that's where wonders came from when there was a review for literacy. It might be that we have materials, but maybe we need more training in particular areas. Or maybe we have materials, but maybe we don't have a coherent assessment system. So the outcome of the curriculum review is more likely to be systemic adoption or shift. Or perhaps it's just a recommitment to, we have these programming components that are strong here and maybe we're looking at course pathways. So that's more of a, you know, a, you know, a really deep examination of our alignment to the standards and responsibilities of those student performers. Whereas that that curriculum journaling and mapping is almost that internal commitment to coherence experiences for students.
Can I say too, I. I'm sure I'm going to ring your bell with this because. I think you have to be fluent enough to to make some shifts in your cycles because, so the history, the materials coming out right now that they're piloting. And that we've got staff going to for history and social science are like fresh off the the press. And we're we're on, we're at the table for those. The science ones come back. Because they're piloting, but they they're not out. So they're coming out, as you well know, next year. So if we did that last year, we'd miss out on this coming up and then we weren't a pilot school. So I think with all of that, I would just encourage that you always remain a little fluid. Because why would you get in front of and then later find these great resources which Desi's putting together and then offering out for us?
So yeah, I'm going to work hard and Angela did a really nice job of laying out what are the curriculum process look like, what are those first steps we need to consider? Different things trigger different time changes. So it might be the curriculum reviewers triggered because it's been a while. And it might be because we have new standards that have just come that really may jump the line and make a shift. Or this curriculum resource we used expired and it is no longer available. So sort of the the triggering timing. But I am working to take that foundation of what she she mapped out and to share what looks like a projection of what our plans are for those upcoming content areas. So and the curriculum family guides can be found if you go under the district learning site, under the curriculum instructional technology. There's a tab on lessons, academics and curriculum, and they live right underneath there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great question.
All right. I think Anna had a question. We have about eight, eight or seven or eight minutes left on this. If we're to stick to schedule, which we're doing the great job with. Did you have some question?
Yeah, mine's great. So with a class.
So with the class size increasing, to you, you mentioned twenty-five. From what my kids told me, that sometimes with the special ed kids, there is a one adult specifically for one student and some class, some of the classes have like three or four adults. Do you find that actually helpful? Because what my kids told me is those adults actually have all the kids around, you know, around them in the classroom, too. So do you actually find that helpful? Or do you find that distracting? Because you not only have twenty-five kids, you also have four, you know, four or five adults. And so what do you guys think?
Yeah, I would say, I would say both, depending on the circumstance. And so I think at both of our schools, it's, it's a benefit, because at most, we have a classroom teacher, maybe a special education teacher who's co-teaching, and then there might be a teaching assistant or a student who needs help with, you know, emotion regulation, that sort of thing. I have, in other districts, I have heard stories of, you know, there's, there's ten adults in a classroom and the kids are just as distracted by the adults as they are, as they are helped. I think, I think the most that I have seen here is, is three. And they, they each kind of perform, actually, we actually saw it in action today. They, they each kind of perform in a different role. So the teacher and the special ed teacher will kind of play off each other. One will take the lead, one will assist, and they'll switch, which is really nice when, we actually saw it today, and the special ed teacher took the role, you know, the kind of the lead role, and the classroom teacher was providing support. And then there was a teaching assistant who was supporting a student who needed some, some help or kind of regulation, that sort of thing. So I think it is a big help.
John, do you have any questions?
No.
All right. My question was, given that this is, so first year in on this zip, what have you, what do you think has been the most impactful? This is off a new strategic plan, new, you know, now we've adopted the vision of the graduate. What do you find has been most impactful? And if there's anything that you could change at this point, what would you choose to share?
I can say from fresh eyes, it's really, you don't often see a district plan as tightly set up with your school plans, and that is incredibly helpful. It's incredibly helpful because the wagon is all getting pulled in the same direction. And so as opposed to, and the resources generally are all that aligned. So from an overall perspective, it's really helpful that these are, these are all done in service to each other, if you, if you're banking on that.
Yeah, I, I think actually, so different kind of lens, probably. I'm just, you know, being here, this is my, my thirteenth year and Sheila's second. What you all have mentioned about us collaborating on this is, for me, is, is huge. You know, to have a thought partner, I think we both, you know, kind of spurred ideas in, in one another. You know, we, we have no reason to compete with one another, or we can all win if we work together. And I definitely felt that, I mean, I've, I've gotten a ton of ideas from Sheila and, you know, the same and the other way. So, so that's, that's really been huge. And also to her point of having everybody pulling in the same direction. It used to be when we would bring the two staffs together, we would hear like, it was almost like a different language being spoken, because we were kind of pulling like this. And, you know, we're like, wait, what's that thing you all are doing? You know, and now when we can get them together, we're all just talking the same language and going in the same direction, led by the strategic plan, which would have been great.
It, it lets you tap into an incredible amount of experience and, you know, after changing districts.
Could you speak, sorry, how much time do we have left? Well, hold on, I had the second part.
Oh, yeah, second part, yeah.
Which was, is there anything you would share? Shifts, change, add.
We need to add, so we talked in our school council, we need to take a closer look at some of our academic progress and add some goals. So we're, we're going to be looking at that. It's important for us to do authentic learning, I don't want us to go the other way. But within the context of our authentic learning, we're going to look a little more closely at instructional efficiencies and then maybe gaps in terms of instructional practice. To Heather's point about doing that journaling and where's everybody and how do we know, what, what does that look like vertically? I think those conversations really need to happen. I just don't think we're holding our kids high enough, accountable enough for, for years, right? So we, we're not sure what each grade level holds them accountable for, and then we move on to the next, and we, we back. And so I think we need that and that goal.
Okay, so we are at, we're at twenty-three, so we have two minutes. So we have completed one round. I can accept, if you have very quick questions, then we can take a second round from the two who have raised their hand. It's up to you if you wish to.
I, I will, we'll try to be very quick, so Kate, can I have one minute? The, the gaps you identified is actually what I wanted to ask about. And whether you think we have the tools, you have the tools in place that you need to try to address gaps. I know, you know, iReady is one of them, and I don't fully understand how the MTSS model works, but we're obviously trying to address a really pretty enormous learning gap created by the pandemic, let alone other gaps that just exist naturally. Do you have what you need? Is it working? I know, sorry Kate, that might not be a one-minute answer, it's not a one-minute.
We, I, I would say that every time we shrink our budget, it gets harder and harder. And so, you know, we'll always work with whatever, you know, the towns give us, and we'll, we'll do the best that we can. But I think somebody earlier said, you know, sometimes there is like a breaking point that, you know, it just, it gets a lot harder to, to continue to produce greatness, which is what we strive for.
Do you mean specifically personnel-wise when you say the budget shrinks?
Yeah.
Getting the feet on the ground.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, materials and that sort of thing, you know, that's a small portion of the budget, but.
Or the girls are down five.
Absolutely, on all the rest players, none of them are here.
Yeah, no, she's down a goalie now, but Tori only let in one goal.
Love it.
Love it.
Got it.
I get two minutes back in the clock.
So when, you know, when, when you, when, when we have to reduce classroom teachers and class size grows up, that makes it harder. You know, we also have reduction in special ed. So it just, now, now your special ed teachers are working with that many more students, or their classroom teachers are working with that many more students. And so that kind of teacher to student ratio, you know, the, the more it gets kind of inverted, the harder it is to give everybody what they need and what they deserve and what we're talking about.
And I would say that ours is not always just resources. I think that in Essex, we have not been, we have not done a great job leveraging the families, helping support some of the skill sets there. We're looking again at the, the concept of homework. I know that was an issue that's come up in the past, but we can't, all families want to help their kids, right? And, and we just need to, to offer parents an opportunity and a way by which they can help their kids. And we have not done a good job there. So I think that probably one of our first.
Can I do just a quick clarifier on the class size and MTSS? So the whole iReady piece, just a quick clarification, because I had the email and then I lost the internet. There are two key pieces. One is the, the diagnostic assessments. So that's what the, the data meetings have been about. So where are the kids and what do they need to progress based on where they are now? Do they need, MTSS is the intervention course. So do they need extra beyond just the core curriculum provided by someone who's an interventionist? Or do they need more in-class supports provided by the teacher? So that's where I think John is trying to make the point, that if I have twenty-four students versus eighteen students, I'm now differentiating based on this set of data that I have for twenty-four kids, not eighteen. I'm going to do my best, but at some point, it starts to diminish what I can do and how well I can keep track of twenty-four versus eighteen. That's iReady diagnostic. It used to be called EAMS Web, it used to be RTI. There's another part of, and you guys mentioned it, the MYPATH. And that's the part that I think everyone's not really quite sure what to do with, and it's playing out, we'll talk about it again, middle school, and that's playing out differently at different levels. But I just wanted everyone to be clear that the MTSS is our intervention support team that gathers with classroom teachers, assesses where kids are at three times a year, and then makes prescriptions based on that to help them improve. That's much better defined at the elementary than secondary, we'll talk about that next time.
Okay, I'll check away your question.
Well, that's my own curiosity, so.
Well, so we're still, we are actually ahead of schedule by the main thing. And I think, given that we're just so starting this, it's not a bad idea to do the whole thing and see how long it actually takes. So if you want to finish with your last question, feel free.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am interested in, I love all of the collaboration, I love the most common initiatives. I'm interested in how, what happens differently at the schools and how that process plays out, how you identify what your individual needs are at Memorial versus the, the needs of Essex and their two different communities of learners, and how you set goals within your building versus across buildings.
That's a good question. You know, Kate was asking about the curriculum journaling and that, that actual step, that actual journaling of like, let's, let's start to write down what we each do in each subject area. That process didn't last very long, because the point of that was almost like, it, it was almost like a, like an icebreaker, so to speak, so that you can kind of put out on the table, oh boy, we're doing a lot of really different things. And, and, and if it works really well here, it probably works really well here, and it probably works really well here. So, so that's one way that we're able, from a curriculum standpoint, to take a look at the different needs in each building. You know, I think listening to our, our stakeholders is huge also, and we might both hear different things. You know, my teachers may, may tell me certain things, my parents may tell me certain things, and Sheila may hear different things. We both did surveys through our school council last year. We actually, we got a, a, a great piece of feedback from our school council members that was also then validated through our survey around consistency of communication, proactive communications, kind of like Sheila was talking about the homework. That's a communication tool home, so parents at home can see like, oh, this is what they're learning about. And we're also adding a new piece this year that, you know, kind of came from our stakeholders, where each classroom teacher is doing a newsletter each week that goes home and says, this week, this is what we're learning, this is what's coming up, these are some things that you can do at home. And they, I mean, they've, they've been super helpful. And what I was explaining to the teachers, like, this helps you as much as anything, because now the parents at home know what's coming up and it can help you at home. And that partnership is, is, is formed more deeply.
And a lot of it comes up in the actual conversation with getting our staff to get accredited. So, you know, some of that natural conversation that happens when you have teachers in the room, hey, how did you do that? What did you do? I think Heather's process and plans for the pacing guides are all feeding into fostering that conversation. You know, what are you using, what are you doing? What was it doing?
Actually, sorry to interrupt you, but the big piece that we're missing in our, our answer is, is the iReady data. So we're able to look at the same data, you know, same assessment, results from the same assessment third grade across the district. And then we're able to see differences there. So for example, the first grade group at Memorial right now performed on that assessment way a bit lower than the first grade students at Essex. So that tells me I need to focus there, where Sheila has some other areas that, that she's seen through MCAS data and iReady data that, that they're going to focus on. So using that common, those, those common.
So it's the same structures?
Yeah, exactly.
And they're supporting the, the different needs.
Yeah, exactly, we're using the same structure. And, you know, I'm looking at mine, and I'm like, oh, are you seeing this? And she said, well, I'm not seeing that, but I'm seeing this, you know? So it allows us to then have those conversations about what to do to kind of fill some of those gaps.
All right. Just a quick clarifier, should things ever come up? This isn't a clarifier, it's just kind of a positive that's come out of this enrollment decline toward building the cross-culture. We talked a little bit about it today. So the enrollment decline put us in the position of utilizing retirements to create shared positions across the district, which we all had mixed feelings about when it came about. But it's, I think it's helped in a positive way contribute to the sharing of, and getting to know the two cultures, not just when you get together in a meeting at the end of the day or on the PD day, but seeing how the different buildings live and breathe during the day. I think that's been an unexpected positive outcome. And then just, just to, this is my point of clarification, the SEL leadership model, which we're excited to have, is grant-funded. So it's budget neutral. We were just a little delayed in putting it in. It's funded through ESAR dollars. It was described and memorialized in our grant application. So we are really just following through on the plan that we had submitted, and we have money for this year and the next. And our hope is that with the joint labor management group fund stipends, we can negotiate it in and renegotiate some other pieces to continue to fund this. So this acts, acts very similarly to our professional stipends for other support work. Just wanted to make everyone clear where the money is coming from. Zero operational dollars, yes.
Which one was, which one was funded by ESAR?
The SEL leader coordinator and the two building reps. We also have, I mean, it's probably worth noting, because it's going to impact elementary level. We have an interventionist, math interventionist, that's also being carried in ESAR. And that, we won't have enough funding in ESAR to go, we were talking about about six thousand dollars per year for the stipends versus an eighty-five thousand dollar a year in benefits commitment. So we are going to plan to bring that back into the operating budget this year. So that'll be one of those confusing, heads are coming back up even though you cut heads, because it's just shifting it from one, one spreadsheet to another. But ESAR's been helpful and helped in to address some of the intervention pieces.
Well, thank you very much for all of your hard work and for your presentation.
Thank you guys very much.
Good night, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm noting that that took us fifty-five minutes to comfortably finish, so that we can keep that in mind for the next time we have middle high school. Not bad, not bad, not bad. Next, we have the Turf Field project update.
Sorry, I was surprised. The, it's going great. You can hear the sounds out there, that's going very well. And the, we have a walk-through scheduled at Brook Street. I believe it's tomorrow to check out if that's all ready to go, including GMAX testing. So basically, it's going to be open this week, one day, hopefully.
It'll be today.
Sooner. But, yeah, sorry, it's any day.
Any day.
Are they fixed in the parking lot, too, at Brook Street?
Uh, I don't believe that's part of the specs. I mean, I'm sure if there was something that happened because of what they did, then yes, but that's not part of the plan.
They're not hearing it.
Well, at least level it, it's so bumpy.
Yeah, so that's a town piece of property, and it's, I don't believe it's our property, and.
But that's not part of the whole thing.
No, it is not. But I can also just say, by the way, we haven't gotten, you know, final invoicing or anything like that, but we did have quite a contingency that you may remember, around sixty percent. And we've used almost none of that. So that's been great. And I know, like, it's been stressful to go through the delays. I do think they were really primarily around the PFAS testing and the specific requirements that we had. We did certainly publish them well ahead of time and did what we need to. So we are holding them accountable for that miss. But once they got on site, I think the work has been good. And the fact that we don't have change orders to the extent of what is common, I think, speaks to what we originally heard from Gail, which is that this is a very competent firm that they've worked with many times. And so sometimes when you're at the early phases, you're just getting to know your partner. That's where like those misses really can be concerning for me as well, and I know for everyone who's been waiting. But once you go through the process of the work, you kind of see the caliber of the organization. So I think we've benefited in both regards from having a good team. And so I appreciate everyone's patience. I know, I know it was not an easy way to start the year, but I'm very excited about how it's going, and we continue to hear very positive feedback about the quality of Highland Field.
I have one question. When, so knowing that Essex has a, a special town meeting coming, or special, the, the fall town meeting coming up, and that there will be a question about our funding on this, when can we expect our final numbers on this?
I would, I'm hopeful to have them by the end of October. I think that that would be reasonable, because if I know them, they're going to want to invoice ASAP. So I think, and we actually haven't, I mean, we've had a favorable cash flow process in terms of holding them accountable on the invoices. So in fact, we have one invoice in hand, we're waiting for, you know, a potential adjustment for the delay, which we asked for before we paid it, rather than trying to get it at the end. So I just said, you know, let's just deal with this now, that was on Highland. So we will get quite a few invoices, probably at the next meeting, it could, it could be all of them. I certainly, if the projects close out, I would like to just get that off the books and done.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping we can get that done to the next meeting. If not the very next meeting for school committee, then they'll buy the one act, I'm sure.
When does it come?
That's what I'm trying to remember. That's what I'm trying to remember. It's the beginning of November.
November.
Yeah.
So you guys have the exact number by then.
Because we have, our, our meeting is what, the seventh of November. It, it could be the sixth roots online. But in any case, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions about turf field project update?
Uh, did, did I hear you correctly? You said 60% contingency in the margin for six.
No, 16.
16.
Yeah. They gave us a 15, 20% recommendation and the bids were just a little bit higher than the original and we ended up, I think booking in around 16%. And because we are already through design development at that point, they said that they felt, Gail, that that was going to work out and we haven't used almost any of it. Yes.
So question, uh, so Manchester already committed 50% 400 K for the book stream. So if the actual content less than the half of the portion is less than 400, how does that work?
Yeah, we're going to have to go do a reconciliation of everything. We certainly wouldn't overbuild them for more than what their project cost comes to. So I think, yes, that's a great question. We would have to kind of say, here's what we ended up doing for each of the fields, which we have and, um, you know, and lay that out and then we would have a revenue against that. I think fortunately Essex is coming up with the revenue proposal for a potential vote in early November. I, I think really for us, we just need to make sure we have approved the money, which we have and we can spend it. At that point, we're talking about reimbursements and I think to know that they've committed the maximum amount is, puts us in a great position. We will make sure that they get charged only what we've expended.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. That's all, that's happy news. Okay. Onto school committee fiscal year 24 goal setting. So we only have about 15 minutes allowed for, or budgeted for that for tonight. So what I kind of want to do is just, I want to set the scene a little bit. I've put a lot of thought toward this because it's come up a couple of times. And I had thought that, um, I actually had thought we were going to accomplish this during our summer workshop. Um, and it, we just didn't accomplish it. I thought things were going to run a slightly different way. Um, and that's okay. Tonight, what I, I want to do is just give a very brief reminder of kind of why this matters, that we have school committee goals. Because we have the goals from prior years, which is, uh, what, I mean, it was the fiscal year 23 school committee goal. So technically, I mean, it's not necessarily still in place it was last year's, um, goal, uh, set. But they actually did a nice job of kind of lining this up for us. Hopefully now that we've been through a full year together, John accepted, um, but we've been through a full year together and experienced the superintendent evaluation process. Some of this is coming together that we have this strategic plan, which is a 10-year plan and this is our guiding thing. So when we choose to set, we kind of have the most flexibility as the school committee because our goals are annual. We set, we set our goals each year. Um, the district improvement plan is a three-year look. The school improvement plans are a two-year look. Pam's goals are a two-year look. So when we've got the strategic plan, we as a group each year have the opportunity to look at this and say, what part of this is most important to us to accomplish this year for us to put our time and energy to? And part of the reason the timing of that matters and the way the sequence of all of our, our meetings goes is because when we then set our goals, we're kind of out of sequence right now. Pam, on a year when she's up for new goals like this year, can set her goals based on the strategic plan and our goals. So at this point, we kind of haven't given her what, what we strongly care about for her to do that. Now you've had to move forward and we've, we need that to happen. But because then the district improvement plan ties into that, the school improvement plans tie that, all of this feeds into it, into each other. And so it really is important that we accomplish this. So all I really want to ask of us tonight is a couple of things that we take a look at, um, just review the goals that we had from last year. It's simple goals. You can see that they absolutely, I think after we met and discussed them, it might've been at the summer thing. I think Jake maybe was the wordsmith on it, who actually put them into a format for us. Um, you can see, you know, I, I took a couple of minutes to sort of, annotate this a little bit. Um, you can see exactly which strategic initiatives they align with, just like when Pam set her, you know, progress report for us to do. That's all, that's all, um, aligned with the strategic initiatives. So if we just take a look at where we've been for the last year, and then I would ask two things. One that we, um, that we consider whether or not this is something that we want to accomplish by doing a, um, you know, a small chunk of time each meeting, like 20 minutes each meeting to talk about what, you know, uh, bring, bringing forth a goal. We can send people to, to wordsmith outside the meeting if we wish to. Or if we want to do this in like a workshop session, which adds one thing to everyone's plate, but it might be worth it to just get it done. I don't think it needs to be overly complicated, but I would suggest, Jake, you might've recommended this a couple of meetings ago, that in the meantime, between now and our next meeting, whatever we decide, that we each do review the, um, learning lunch that was offered by M A S C in June. Um, I rewatched that again and, um, and it's really very helpful and I can send the link out to that. But if we each commit to watching that so that we have a real fundamental understanding of, of the process and, and the why and the how, then really what we need to do is decide when we want to do this. Do we want to do it in a chunked out bit over the course of some meetings? Or do we want to do it in a workshop model for that? So that might be the first question that we could answer right now. And then just take a look at the goals that we've had before.
Can there be a full option to, uh, bring ideas together in a Google Doc? Or then not, okay.
Uh, I think that if we choose to do it over the course of a few meetings, we're going to have to have the conversations in open meeting no matter.
Sure. Yeah, of course.
So whichever version of the process we choose to do, we can, we can use a Google Doc to collect information if we want to. Yeah. But we're still going to have, we're still going to have to have the conversation either here or in a workshop session.
Concepts here and then you can wordsmith right in the doc.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So do, do we generally wish to, um, just struggle? Who would prefer to do this all at once in one workshop session instead of time?
Can I ask a question?
Please, yeah.
Is it worth asking? Sorry, I was just going to say before you guys, is it worth asking the question? How far apart are you going to take from your existing goals? Cause sometimes goals have lasted for committees over multiple years without change. That could be a starting, and that answer might help you pick which avenue to take.
It could, but I also want to make sure that we have, that we have enough time separately from what we've already got in place, because I know there are people that do have new, new things that they want to bring into it. So I don't, I don't know that we can even decide, you know, how far a departure. If anyone has, um, minutes from, I think it was our, was it September 5th that we had a meeting? This is in your minutes or in your packet from that was the school committee goals. Take a look. So do we want to just go through this first then and then see if we need to, or do we want to decide what format we want to take with this?
I think that we need to, I think that we need to look at them before we can decide.
Okay, great. Um, so not sure how many people have their, their September 5th minutes on hand, but I will just read these out. So the first was work collaboratively with our member towns to allocate resources for both the near-term and long-term financial health of the district, including the pursuit of a correction that maintains educational quality and supports our mission, vision, core values and strategic initiatives. So clearly we're not.
Are you taking feedback every single one?
I, I don't think we want to, that's the thing. We only set a small amount tonight. I think we just want to take a pace of where we are right now.
What's the scope of your work, I think is the question you're asking.
Right now.
What, what's the scope of your work to, to amend or update your goals, right? You're reading them out. So people have a sense of what they are.
Yeah.
So then you can figure out, do you need 15 minutes for the next three meetings? Do you need a full day?
Nobody say full day, please. Okay. So number two, utilize the facilities, facilities index report of the Essex Elementary School, Middle School and High School buildings and propose a timeline for pursuing renovation or repair of Essex Elementary School. The third was partner with our students, families, faculty and staff in pursuit of our strategic initiative to nurture an inclusive and diverse school culture that recognizes the contributions and uniqueness of all individuals. And the fourth was advance academic excellence by ensuring implementation of and developing community support for the district strategic plan, including stra- strategies for authentic learning and S E L integration. So, I mean, if we did want to just take this as a base and start with, we would need to rework number one for sure. I mean, but obviously that is the, the budget, um, issue is, is a top priority. So there would need to be some reworking, obviously.
Can we talk about overall feedback is, uh, before going to every single one?
I'm just giving an overview and then yes. So I love you. Well, let me get through the thought that I have and then move through this. Number two, we have sort of completed in that we, we actually moved forward and submitted the statement of intent. But what we haven't done is made, we haven't had that received. We've gone through the first part, but come November, we're going to have more information about whether or not we wish, um, to move forward, if we're accepted to actually move forward. And there's been new conversation about considering that. Number three, the partnering with students, um, to, in pursuit of the strategic, to nurture an inclusive and diverse school culture. We might have just opinions about that. I, I have some questions about that. And then the fourth, advancing academic excellence, um, by ensuring implementation of and developing community support for the strategic plan. So it seems like those two things are separate. I feel like we've been working or we've been ensuring implementation of, I'm not sure how we're, how we're doing with the developing community support for, um. So there, we would definitely need to either reconsider or rework some of that for sure. So sure, let's take some overall feedback.
Are you ready? Because I have a lot. Um, so.
So keeping in mind that we are, this is, the goal for tonight is to decide how we want to do this. That, that's the goal for tonight. So let's get the feedback, but in a, in a, in a concise point, because the goal for tonight is not to do this. It's just to decide, do we want to do this in a workshop session or do we want to do this chunked out over meetings?
So my, uh, so the goals for the school committee or goals for any organization or any group is something that you, we can, we, we can achieve. It's something that we can achieve within this academic year. We are already into October and we don't have the goals yet. But what I was thinking about is in the beginning or the past two or three sessions that we had since September, well, we already kind of prioritize what we want to do. One is communication. Why is the budget, this other things? And I feel like we need to merge the two together. So what we say we're going to prioritize has to be reflected in the goal, number one. Number two, my point is based on, uh, M A S C and like all other things that school company has three major jobs. One is management superintendent. Second one is to make sure the strategic plan or the programs carry out successfully. The third one is to manage the budget. So we need to make sure that all three is reflected or kind of communicated as part of our goal. It's not. And so that is my overall feedback. I feel like there's still a lot of work to be done.
Thank you.
So I have a comment with you.
I think we need a workshop.
I guess.
I don't think we're doing this.
What we're even doing has.
But can we, I think Anna raises a really interesting point, right? Is that those are, if those are the three functions of the school committee and we agree that we can break our goals down by those three categories, can we then divide this process up to consider goals related to budget in one session, goals related to, um, strategic plan in another session, goals related to superintendent in a third session?
I would like to suggest that before we commit to setting our goals based on those stated three purposes of the school committee, we actually do make sure that we've all watched and gone through that M A S C learning lunch, which really does talk, it, those are our things. But our goals really ought to also connect with the strategic plan. They really, they, they need to very specifically. So let's, let's get all the information we need to first in our own training so that we can actually do that before we commit to those three.
And I suggest that for the next meeting, we've watched this and we come with the buckets that we want our goals to fall into.
Sure.
In the next meeting?
That's not, not with your goals, but with, you've watched the, the, the training, the learning lunch and you have come up with where you see the categories in which we need to have goals. So for example, budget.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
I think that's a reasonable start.
How much time are you thinking about the next meeting? Because we also have middle school and high school presentation.
So again, we don't have, but if we're just coming with the categories, then we can merge and see where we overlap and where we don't. And then we can see from there, do we need to set a time to actually do this? Or is this something that we could then continue to do as well?
And can we submit, are we able then to submit those categories to you in advance so that you have them and can propose some sort of structuring based on what everybody has submitted?
Yeah, but I think we should have the initial conversation here before we, before we submit any of that. Okay.
What do you guys think?
All right, go ahead, Erica.
Happy to do that. I think that's a good plan, Kate, and it's efficient. So that's smart, but I still think that given the significance of this, right? Like this is our operating plan for the year. I think it would make sense to dedicate a single time when we discuss it rather than try and divide it up over seven different meetings. I think it's going to make us all crazy.
Are we open to then doing a like remote lunch meeting for that? I can't see us adding it to an existing business meeting at this point.
Is that, is that something that you could be available to? Okay. Okay. So how about we plan? So the, the plan as we have it right now is that we are going to each watch the training in its completeness, the, the learning lunch. Um, I will send it out by email tomorrow morning. And then, um, at our next meeting, we will come with our categories of goals that we want to work toward, to merge them together and then set a workshop time that works for everybody in order to take those categories and create goals out of them. But we will leave this meeting next time with the categories that we're going to be considering so that we can then do our own thinking and brainstorming about it and come prepared to the workshop to have a meaningful conversation.
Can I add on to, uh, as part of the homework in addition to reading through the training?
It's a, it's a video.
Yeah, whatever that might be. Can I also ask people to also read through our policy, which has a specific session about roles and responsibility of the school committee members? Because in there is very specific as some of the things that we need to do on a regular basis. It would just be, be helpful, um, to kind of help people to shape about what category they are thinking about specifically for us for this academic year.
Yeah, sure. And each, and for what it's worth, it, within that learning lunch training, they actually do build that in quite a bit about roles and responsibilities and how that fits into the whole setting process, which is helpful.
Segues well into our discussion of the.
Okay. Yes. Dear.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't. It's for your process of consideration. You might want to consider two-year goals given.
In where we are.
We can put five.
Okay. So we have a plan for that. Well done. Excellent. Check. Okay. Did a thing. Okay. Moving on to.
One quick follow-up.
Yes.
So I can start, because the calendar is fun.
Sure.
So you, we want to do a workshop, like a lunchtime noon workshop sometime after the 17th, but before the 7th?
I don't think we have a, a, a hard end on this. I think that it's whenever works.
If on November 7th, we mean? What's the 7th?
If that's just the next meeting, if we, if we can, then lovely, but I don't know that we need a hard end.
Instead, we should coordinate it with Pam.
Right.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be, it shouldn't be after. In a sense.
I'm more trying to figure out, we've already eaten up most of those, yeah, those two weeks between. We, like, we have this, like, we have the 17th, we're going to try to do something. It's just getting tight. And I can, I can make more things work than, it's the coordination of everyone. It's no one's one set. It's no one individual schedule.
Right.
So just give, if you give me a ballpark, I can start to.
How about anything that you think? Give us a handful of dates and we will go from there.
I'll do like a little chart.
Okay.
Before we conclude that, um, if we are thinking about the goals of school committee, one thing to think about that we're not doing and other school districts are doing and it says that we're supposed to be doing is the, uh, school committee self-evaluation.
That's been part of our process every summer as part of our workshop time. So at the end of June, the chair would circulate, like through July, people would work on self-evaluation. We'd send it in and then we'd go through it as part. So we'd go through that. We don't have a discussion about it, things we can fix, things we can make better. That would inform where you are with kind of where are we with our goals? Then we would go into where am I with my goals? Revisions of the school committee goals, revision, like we would do them side by side. So, I mean, that's something you could do for the workshop if you wanted to.
I think we need to be aware of taking on too much right now. I would, I, let's just work on goals. Let's just work on goals and know that in the next cycle, we can get back on the, our spring was a little unorthodox.
And for what it's worth is I'm looking at the like, I feel like I made that comment about September is kind of the settle in. Now like the train's pulling out of the station. So also by mid-November, we need consensus around what our strap, what our budget.
Yes.
Kind of non-negotiables are um, what you want to see in terms of formats, because we're going to start building them.
They're jumping ahead.
You're not, but you are. So yeah, just the budget goals in terms of having a, because I know communication is in the forefront of everyone's mind. We just need, what are we communicating?
Yeah.
And then it's pretty easy to go from there.
Yeah.
So it's going to come up quick, I think, as well. I'm trying to say, I guess, like we're going to blink and we're going to be on.
Okay, so we will do this in workshop format. And send out some dates. That would be lovely. And that does segue well into the discussion of the all boards meeting. So just to kind of structure this discussion a little bit. I had a conversation with Pam and there's where we can all share our thoughts and feedback from the meeting itself. Uh, but also it'd be nice if we tonight were able to come out of this with a little bit of a plan of action. So a couple of things that we um, that we really do need to do and are committed to doing, um, because it has come up repeatedly is evaluating all of those ideas that have come forth last year. Everyone had ideas. There were loads of them. Got kind of a running list, but um, there are all these ideas of how of things that we could be doing to um, maybe not solve the problem, but at least make it less bad. And all of those ideas deserve consideration. And so we kind of have parallel tracks that we have to take on here at this time. One is evaluating those ideas. Right? So we need to evaluate them. We need to, well, I'll tell you the, I'll give you a proposed process for that. But then at in a parallel way, we also need, it it may take some time to evaluate all of those ideas and recognizing that, you know, most of them aren't going to be the the silver bullet that solves the big budget problem, right? Um, we also do have to decide as a committee what we are going to support so that we can give Pam the exact direction she's just mentioned. They're going to have to move forward. And so we as a committee are going to have to be um, in that parallel track deciding whether we as a group are supporting um, a budget. Again, recognizing that there are these other ideas that may help, right? But are we going to support a budget that um, that involves cuts in order to accommodate the uh, perceived needs of one town? Are we going to support a budget that are we going to ask them for so that we can support a level services budget? A level funded budget, additional investment, all of the things, all those conversations. But while we're doing the evaluation, we don't, we don't really have the ability to wait until all things are thoroughly vetted out to give direction at the same time. So we we have to give them due diligence, but oh, but that's why we're going to need to prioritize them. We are going to have to put our names on it a lot earlier than than February, you know, when we actually adopt a budget so that we can have direction for the towns um, and move forward. Toward then actually getting support for whatever that is, because no matter what we choose, there will be people who wish it were something else. So in part, in terms of evaluating the ideas, um, list we we had kind of or plan, we had sort of come up with and are open to input on is, um, if we start with tonight by compiling this list of ideas and we can continue doing that at our next meeting also, um, in case other people have, you know, we forgot something or other people have input they'd like to share with us for ideas on things they'd like to see us evaluate. Um, so we compile that list of ideas. Um, and then after that, perhaps at our ten seventeen meeting, when we have it, we can refine it for viability. Um, some of the things might just on its face, we may have already looked at them. We may, we may just say maybe not so much, but for viability in terms of this is something we want to deal with for the fiscal year twenty-five budget. Um, this is something that maybe seems like a good idea, but we're going to deal with that another time. Maybe it's not enough. Thanks for the buck and we have to prioritize. Um, you know, resources here, or it's something that either isn't our purview, isn't viable. We can hand it off to somebody else. We can, we can whatever you have about it. Um, and then with the viable ideas, with the ones that actually have some merit, we can assign. We can invite um, administrators or small working groups or however we want to structure that, whoever seems like the best people to do this, um, to to look into it further. Either develop the idea or research further what other people are doing and how how viable it truly is, report back. Then we actually take a vote on each of those ideas with all of the information rather than just talking about it. We have the information. We don't have to vote on them all the same day. It can be as they as they come up, but we vote on whether we as a committee are going to instruct or or task Pam with incorporating that into this budget development process. Because then we are either committing to do that thing that that was an idea, or we are committing to say we've evaluated it and we are choosing not to do that thing. And then the final piece of this is we need to be able to document all of these things in a way that's easily accessible for the community. Because we'll have people just like last year come into this process at different times. And maybe we've already talked about a thing or whatever, and they're not going to go back and watch four hours of meetings to direct them to, here's the answer, here's what we looked at, here's what we found, and here's why we made the choice we did. So that's my proposed plan for the, we we do need to evaluate a lot of these things. Class size is one of them. So however we do it, you know, that's one of them. So um, but in parallel, we're going to have to be, again, come into terms with what it is we are willing to um, support. So any thoughts of that uh, on that? Or um, would we like to start compiling that list? Like it'd be nice to have. Uh, I I'd like to hear from everyone else. What are the things that stick in your mind?
So my concern is that no matter what we do to evaluate ideas, I am concerned that town partners will um take their own evaluation of these ideas or will conduct their own or will insist on having the information in order to evaluate these ideas. And impose those findings on our budget process. And so I really think that this goes back to define roles and responsibilities, which ideas have been thrown out there that should be owned by the school committee in terms of deciding whether or not they should be driving factors in the budget that we come up with. Or that we have heard.
I hear what you're saying. I think they're so open to other inputs as well, but I do think at we can't wait to come up with a defined roles and responsibilities agreement between three.
No, absolutely. So obviously class size is the big one. And we've had a significant back and forth with town partners about class size. I believe that the school committee and the our district leadership should be able to make responsible decisions regarding appropriate class size in our district that consider both the educational merits and fiscal responsibility. I don't understand why a town partner would want to own that decision. And I feel like we are getting a lot of feedback about what we should be doing related to class size.
So this is where we take that power back. We take that opinion back and we say, we are evaluating this. We're doing it in open public meetings. People can contribute their thoughts through public comment, or they can contribute their information if they have more information. And then we vet it in open meeting together and we make that vote and then we have to back it based on majority. I think that's where I I I share your concern, but I also think that that we have the opportunity, if we're doing this in public ways where everybody knows this is what we're doing, that we we pull that back and say this is the decision we're making, because in the end, we have to, this this shouldn't be news you know, to to anybody in any role. We have to approve the budget to send to the towns. We have to be able to put our names on that. So um, I think it's reasonable for us to 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 that, uh, to evaluate all the ideas, but also to make a decision whether or not we are going to instruct the budget to be developed based on those ideas. And then we just have to be willing to have our spines shiny and own it. Did I? I I I wasn't trying to talk about.
No, go ahead, Jake. I see what you're saying.
So I'm having trouble weighing in or considering your proposed process without knowing the scope of the ideas that are on the table.
Sure.
They're all the magnitude of class size.
Yeah.
We're not going to get to it this year.
Yeah.
Those are all significant educational program considerations.
Yeah.
If it's like field revenue, you know, for advertisements, that might be, you know, simpler to consider. But I just don't know what the list of ideas is to understand what magnitude of inquiry we're talking about here.
Yeah. And I I think that's part of the proposed process is to determine if there are big giant things like that, we can't take all of that on. And we get to choose what we invest that time and energy toward, but we could, we could pull it out. But go ahead, Erica.
Isn't a reasonable starting point right now is just for us to go around and reflect on what we heard at the three boards meeting as things that the community has asked us to look into. And then, as you say, we tackle the feasibility
Yeah.
of some of these things and whether or not, as Kate said, they fall in our our lane or somebody else's lane. But I think we we start by saying, what were we asked to do?
Yeah.
And that's the idea, pretty straightforward. Let's do it.
Okay, Erica, you start. Okay. Um, so what I heard, I heard a lot of things. I'm not going to have any comments and all of that, but the things I heard that different parties, different stakeholders raised was one, a budget consultant of some, I I mean, some people referenced it with respect to, you know, proportionment formulas, others just almost within the capacity of an auditor. So we can discuss the parameters of that if we decide to. Yeah. Um, another is um, efficiencies to be gained by cost sharing, whether that's facilities, services, et cetera. We've already said the class size consideration of a policy in that regard. Um, the Manchester Borislakman raised the fact that fifty percent of our budget is on the non-instructional side. And they would like us to consider um, whether we can make cuts to the program that don't involve the instructional side. Um, there, those are my four. And I I I will point, I don't think we need to detour from this right now to do it, but um, but one thing we talked about was helping our committee understand what non-instructional costing is, because that's looking like a big number. Do you want to take half a second to do it?
No, we're working on just showing you, these are the function codes and the lines that are instructional. These are the function codes and the lines that are non-instructional. You know, the fifty percent, that's where all of the insurance and audit district placement and transportation is. And then there's something out of the words, but it'll be clear.
Anna?
Uh, everything she said. Uh, plus, I think that non-instructional, what people meant from what I heard is not just the uh, the second path, the second half of the page of on the budget, not just the health and facility and all that stuff, but it's also the non-teachers portion of operation structure, like, you know, the, you know, including salary, because salary is actually on the top, so it's so you get what I'm saying. But what I heard is everybody wants to wants validation of what we are doing. I think people want validation to see if we are at the bare minimum right now before before each entity start thinking about where to cut, where to add and whatnot, because we need to make sure that we are on the same page. And I don't think we're there. And that's why the consultants, like whatever consultant that you said, budget consultant, operational consultant, um, program consultant, all that stuff. I actually think it will help to level all the different opinions and it will also help us, because we haven't done one for for twenty years. It will help us to kind of do that as well.
I want to call rabbit hole though. Right now, we don't need to evaluate them. We just want to list them out.
Everything she said.
Got it.
Can we talk about the regional agreement? I would bunch together with class size, enrollment trends. And I would put in parentheses, private school enrollment. For the record, this is not my list. This is.
We understand.
Yep.
Yep.
I'm just scrolling through, even.
Jake, any thought? Oh, you weren't, but that's all right.
I listened to it. Facilities came up.
Yeah.
Finding ways to create efficiencies.
Yep.
We also talked about the growth of the budget over the last ten years. It's averaged what, three point four percent? Um, you know, annually, um, and so like, my perspective, I think that's, you know, a pretty good number, given, you know, what people have gone through, you know, COVID, um, you know, inflation, all all sorts of things, the last ten years. Um, I think that's a a great, you know, mark. And I I wouldn't want to, I I would just say like, let's kind of use that as a baseline going into this new budget. I don't want you to, uh, you know, come up with a five percent increase or six percent increase, but you know, I I think that two percent is pretty thin too. So kind of like staying within that that trend is a good starting point, maybe. Um, and then see what that looks like. It may be understanding, um, you know, like who's retiring, who's planning on retiring next year. Just have a sense of that. And positions that we might might want to fill or need to fill or.
So I'm putting on there for your, like, like an understanding of the growth trends and a historical look back, that that is something that.
So the historical look back is about three point four percent.
Yeah.
And so I guess I'm coming from like a level services sort of starting.
The band, I'm hearing you say keeping uh, consistent, keeping our proposed budget within the consistent band of where we've been.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Yes. And then understanding variances from there. If there are any.
The things I I had that weren't on there were fundraising keeps coming back up over and over.
And and fees.
Yes. Look at our fee structure. Um, and then I oh, I, that's right. I had one of these and you had the other, but the the other thing that came up that night and has continued to come up is is options for um, you gave me the word regionalization, basically, like the AP courses, looking at sharing with other schools, regionalization options. Um, specifically for AP or anything we can share with other districts. Um, but I think you had mentioned something else. And that was a separate kind of thing, but anyway. Okay, that's right. There's a task force.
Well, there will be.
Hold on, Erica had her hand up. We're on round two now. Yeah.
So this didn't come out of the meeting, but I feel like we can't talk about these things without, at least I want to mention that while we're talking about all the ways that maybe we could save money, we also need to think about what we want our schools to look like. And when I sit here and I listen to the administrators of two elementary schools talk about the fact that our reductions are impacting the classroom, I want to understand that. And I want to understand if our budget and I, you know, I'm sure there's people listening that are not going to be pleased with what I'm going to say, but we may need to add back teachers if we have classrooms that are at twenty-four and twenty-five kids. That has to be part of our consideration. So I don't know where that fits in.
I think that fits in that parallel track, which is like, okay, we're we're being asked by people around us to please consider these things. Why haven't you considered this? Can you merge APs? Can you do all of these things? Can you, can you do all of these things to either cut costs or or bring in revenue? But separately from that, we need to decide, because that's not the only available information. This is the other available information. And we need to decide what district we want. You're right. That that's a, but I'm looking at this as a parallel track.
And that's why I brought up that that question about, you know, teachers possibly retiring. Because if, let's say you have four teachers retire, that doesn't, in my mind, that doesn't automatically mean a cost savings. Like, we should fill those positions if we need to.
A a shared understanding of what level services means.
Uh, we haven't mentioned, but I thought I heard, listening to it, um, school choice as a.
That's right.
I think was talked about last time is the process. Like how we, with the three entities, how do we more streamline the process? At what point, what information? At what point, what information do we need, uh, or do, do people need, or do we, do we need to make decisions?
I agree, but I don't think that that's in the category of things we need to evaluate to reduce costs or bring up revenue. Like that's, that's what we're going through right now is just the ideas that people keep bringing up about. How, have you considered this to bring down the amount? That's, that's another important consideration that we care about, but separate from this.
I mean, we're doing a. This is kind of a balcony piece. And I don't know that it was said explicitly, but if you kind of get up on the balcony and listen to the entirety of the conversation, what we have is a list of potential remedies with the assumption that there's a problem.
Right.
So budgeting philosophy may be the biggest question I think we need to answer, which is, do, do we believe that we should be setting the budget to, right, to the lowest number or to a number that we're directed to? I don't mean directed in a negative way, but we're being asked to meet.
Right.
Which is inconsistent with our historic band, which we know. Um, is that a premise that this group accepts and wants to use as the driving force for budget development? Which, which I think kind of gets into points that you're making about if there are things that we need, there are things that we need. So should we always just be starting with the assumption that we have to go as low as we can to get to a certain point?
I think, yeah, and I think that's, ma- maybe I'm not doing, explaining this well. That is the parallel track. That's the thing we have to decide together is what do we want out of a district? And budgeting philosophy goes with that.
Yeah.
So it seems like that's its own separate conversation as well. But we do have the diligence factor of have we considered all of these things? Cause they, they, they've been asked repeatedly, Jake and then Erica. Yeah.
I would say, Pam, in listening to the session, what I was hoping to hear but didn't is a sense of, uh, guidance to us from the towns about whether or not we're stuck at, you know, like absolutely it's 2.5 like overall. Or is there, is there potential for override or if needed, right? And I'm not sure that we got any insight on that. Um, so I think that needs to.
Well, I mean, they answered that pretty expressly. I don't know if you didn't have that.
I don't know. I, I wouldn't agree that they.
Well, Essex didn't have that.
I wouldn't agree that there was consensus on the.
Oh, there isn't consensus, but I can tell you exactly what boards said publicly that they would be in favor, that they would support an override if necessary, or they would not support an override. I mean, Essex was clear that they will not support an override.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't hear that in listening explicitly said, but I.
There would be no appetite for.
There would be, that's what I said. There would be no appetite for one.
Okay.
And they also noted that even if we came in with an overall budget of 2.5%, they would still have a $60,000 deficit.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
So I, I think the reason this makes sense to me, this list, is I think what we're really tasked with doing is all, all stakeholders want an excellent school. Essex told us at the all boards meeting that they can't support more than two and a half percent. So our question is, can any of these strategies be implemented such that we can return an excellent school with a diversity of choices for our students at two and a half percent? That's what we need to figure out. Can we do it? If we can, of course we should.
Well, and also who's responsible for defining whatever, what an excellent education is. And also, you need a shared understanding of level services. We, we also need a shared understanding of excellence.
Well, I think that that is for us. I mean, that's. But, but I think that is a fair charge though, to say we, we do need to look at it critically and, and see if we can't, can we, can we somehow think of this differently? And I agree with you when we've been at three and a half percent and when most high performing school districts are above 3%. It is hard for me to conceptualize how we get there for so much less. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't try. It doesn't mean we shouldn't look at these ideas. We should.
And I, and I actually don't know that we have heard from all stakeholders that they want excellent schools. I think that I've heard words like strong or, well, but right, I think.
I have heard words like good enough.
Those words are carefully chosen.
So.
And I think that I have heard anecdotally from voters.
Yeah.
Who don't want to support the budget that would be needed to provide excellent schools as, as, as we have defined them in the past. Maybe there's a different definition that we will find through this process. Well, if we're going to take a, if we're just going to keep going higher and higher level with this, let's, I mean, that comes to the question, the strategic plan was a, was a multi-year process with all stakeholders. I mean, people from stakeholders involved the communities by way of actual representation and also survey, right? That was developed with the idea of 3.5 cap, right? A max 3.5 reinvesting, I mean, reinvesting with efficiencies and attrition to, to forward those initiatives. If that, that should be our definition of the excellent schools that we're trying to shoot for. Because that is what the community, the school committees, the, the, everyone, all the stakeholders identified as our goal, a 10-year goal in a multi-year process. And so that should be the definition. I think where we get thoughts down those in the specifics. So our strategic plan does not say that excellent schools provide foreign languages at the middle school level. But we do have initiatives within the strategic plan that are directly related to cultural competencies.
Yeah.
And so then I think maybe where our failure is, is not bringing that conversation straight back to the strategic plan and saying, is eliminating foreign language in our middle school in line with our strategic plan? Or our mission of a comprehensive educational experience? Is it comprehensive that we've removed?
So what I would say about the strategic plan is it highlights what we want to change and improve. It doesn't actually say what we expect as a base, you know, to your point. So I don't think we can use it as the definition of excellence. It certainly, we need to tie decisions back to it. But because it doesn't say what we mean as a base.
I think it does. When we look at the, the mission, vision and core values. A step closer to the target or a step further away.
Yep. Yep. We should measure, we should measure that relative impact. But it doesn't define what we mean by excellent schools. It defines the things we want to improve.
I think the strategic priorities define the things we want to improve. But I think that the mission, vision, core values and vision of the graduate very clearly define what we are considering the target. What was the word you just used? Comprehensive? Well, yeah, because the mission, I mean, right at the top, the mission of Manchester Essex Regional School District is to provide a high-quality, comprehensive, student-centered educational experience. So those, those are right there.
Which you can achieve a thousand different ways.
Of course. Yeah. That prepares them for post-secondary educational or service experience, a career and life as an engaged member of society. And then we have the vision, the core values and the vision of the graduate.
I think you can tie a lot of things to this. I, I think honestly, as Jake just said, any plan we make, we can link to this. It's probably worded enough that what we really need to decide here is what, what we think, what, what school we are creating a budget for support. And, and whatever it is, I'm pretty sure we're going to be able to link to some of those big words in the strategic plan. Because everybody.
I see it differently, but I can understand that.
I think everybody's going to have a different meaning of, I read, read that sentence again. It doesn't have any facts in it.
But neither does the word excellent.
No, I know.
Right.
But we need to define what that, so sitting here, does an excellent school system, does a school system we want for this district include two languages in high school? Does it include five languages in high school? Does it include any middle school language? Does it include an elementary school language program? Like those are specific facts and I think we can probably justify them and connect them to the strategic plan, but we need to decide.
Yeah. I think we're getting at the same thing. I'm just looking at it differently and it's okay.
I think you can look at it at your competitiveness too, with other neighboring communities. You don't want to have a program that has less offerings than our neighbors or like districts with whom our kids will be competing for post-secondary, um, schooling. And then one other thought I have is we should try to answer the question as well, whether we or not we accept the, eh, accept the reality that these are all very interesting ideas and should be vetted and discussed. But these are all ideas, do we accept that there are three to four major variables that grow at a rate greater than three and a half percent, for which we're going to continually have to make trade-offs just to live there? And if that's the case, are we okay at saying we're going to always continue to make trade-offs in our program and in our structure? Because we have to overcome things that are outside of our control. I mean, healthcare is likely going to grow greater than three and a half percent. We know where the contract lands. We know that out of district transportation and out of district spending, that those large chunks in insurance in, um, EERD pension are going to push us over the limit. So we're, we are fixating on smaller underlying pieces that aren't going to change the trajectory of growth for the district, no matter what you do. You're going to go, if we did everything on this list and got us to zero for the year, you're going to roll your budget forward and you're going to be over three and a half percent for the following year. So where does that discussion take place? Because that's the structural piece. And it's the pieces of the budget, which are mandates and requirements that we can't change. So we're always going to have to sync to the discretionary pieces, which are the pieces that are somewhat subjective, but the pieces that have kind of made us who we are. You know, we can argue with the origin of the benchmarks. The benchmarks have been the reliable guideposts for class size in this district since at least 2008. People have come to expect that. So if we're going to veer away from them, even if we have wonderful data to support our departure, and I don't know that we will, that's going to feel like a setback. And that's going to feel like a lessening of service for people, regardless of whether or not we can figure out a way to maintain outcomes. So I guess where does that, where does that discussion happen that we're fixating on some, on underlying pieces that don't change the outcome?
Well, I think that's part of, part of the concern is that we need to not be fixating on them. But we have to.
We have to evaluate.
Absolutely. But then, once we do evaluate them, we make a decision about whether it's something that is valuable towards solving this problem. Does this actually get us down to that two and a half that might make a difference? If it doesn't, then we can choose to close that door so that even if other people get sidetracked and, and fixated on them, we don't have to. That, I mean, that's because otherwise, that's, that's what leaves the space for us to have the budget philosophy conversation. But for ourselves, we as a group of seven have to choose to close the door on which ones need closing door and we have to do it together and, and openly. But I, I think that, um, in fact, it wrote down here, you know, what is it we need as a group to start having the budget philosophy conversation? We've got our experience so far, right? And on 1017, we've got a couple of things on the agenda already, but there's no reason we couldn't. It, it's not a heavy lift so far, right? We have middle.
We have middle high school.
Middle high school. And we know that we can do that in approximately 55 minutes because we did elementary tonight. Um, so in any case, we can set aside a chunk of time to start having that conversation. So what is it we need to know, knowing that we can't do analysis and do this in six months? What do we need to come prepared with having considered or need to know in order to have a budget philosophy discussion?
This is a budget question. This is a number thing. So go back to Erica's point is, can we get to the 2.5? And how do we get there? And then we can start to look back and see how big the gap is and then go from there. There are some other things over there. For example, um, like you mentioned, the healthcare goes up more than 3.5% every year. Have we looked into cost share healthcare?
Cost share healthcare?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Makes that you can actually group people's, um, the healthcare together and then much lower rate because your number of employees is higher. Many corporations do that. So.
Do you mean with the organization that's not ours? We enjoy an consortium?
Maybe.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we've done that before. We can talk about that.
Yeah. So all this, I actually think that, uh, a lot of the great ideas.
By the way, just quickly on that, it's generally based on claims versus volume, but we can talk about it. It's a great idea to talk about in budget season and, and maybe we could explore something, you know? I don't, I'm not trying to shut it down, but there's, there's a utilization issue and a volume issue that we should probably bring to school committees here.
I think we might want to approach this, all the ideas at the same time with the data together. And then that, because we're running out of time, people. So for example, we need to start with 2023. The, the, the final where we close the books. And they say 2.45% and then line by line, what does that mean? All your assumptions. And then evaluate the assumptions. How can we tighten it even more and whatever that might be? And here's the baseline and where, how much is the gap? Then go from there to see how much of the gap that we can actually fit in all the different ideas or take it out and how we can solve the problem. It has to be also data driven as well.
It does, but I, I think that what, what we have the opportunity here to do is not just do this one year of, of issue. And if we, if, if we don't take this opportunity to have a conversation about this, the next year, when it's less than two and a half, the next year. Pam has said repeatedly, she can, they can draw us up a two and a half percent budget. They can do that. Is that the kind of, is that the direction we want to give? Do we have a group idea about that? If, if the whole group together wants to see, here's what that looks like. I mean, we saw what it looked like bringing it down just a little bit this spring and what came from it. Well, so we've always done our budget process by giving a percentage of growth. We've never looked at what the educational program would look like. Or I, we have never gone the other way, right? We've never looked at what percentage of growth would we need to provide the educational program that we are hearing people would like? So if we are hearing people want middle school foreign language back, if we are hearing people don't want class sizes over 23 students. If we're here, and I'm not saying that these are the, whatever that the case may be. But if this is the educational program that we want to be able to provide, how much does that cost?
Okay. Don't we essentially do that every time we use level services?
No, because level services have become lower and lower and lower each year. Because level services this year, the, for the next school year, will reflect what we provided this year, not what we provided four years ago before we cut the late bus, before we cut Spanish in the middle school, before we combined our librarians. Like all of those things represented changes to what I would call level services that were made in response to requests to bring the budget down. And so if we provide level services next year, that would not be level with what we provided two years ago.
The diminished services. Yeah, I've always had trouble with level service language. I think we need to stop using it because to your point.
We did look at it though last, I mean, I would just, you know, for clarity, last year we asked Pam to provide three budgets and she provided a cuts and a level and a budget that had add back. So, so we tried to do it. My frustration with that process has always been, I would love more, like, so we came up with the things that we knew have been cut. We came up with the late bus. We came up with the language programs. What I really would love to hear from our administrators is, you know, for instance, a thing that always comes to my mind, are we tackling learning loss the way we need to be? Because it's time sensitive. This is, you know, we're graduating kids every year who have a loss that is not going to be restored and may impact them for the rest of their lives. I want to make sure we're doing what we can. Okay. Sorry. I know this is a rabbit hole. I won't.
No, it's not.
I won't go further down it, but like, I would really love to understand and, and I, you know, I'm not an educator. But what do our educators really need? And then we can figure out what we're willing to live without, because of course, nobody ever gets anything.
What I'm hearing them say is you want to hear our, our people advocate for their needs.
We're not in the ground.
Like where they are, you know? Our kids are, but.
So I would say enrollment has served, has served us well in that it has allowed us to maintain level services while making some attrition reductions until about two years ago when we lost sixth grade Spanish. So to your point, learning loss, very comfortable with what we're doing at the elementary. For the high school, a solution may have been instead of retiring out people, take one of those retirees, hire an interventionist and build something into U block. That's what I would have recommended to Julie, but that had to go, now the cut doesn't go to reinvestment. The level service, like it or not, same scope, same FTE, same level of program.
Well, and there's never any.
And reinvest.
There's never any conversation about growing our program and about.
Right. So during years where we were coming in at level service, we would always act. So during years where we were coming in at level service, we would always actively look for which program needs to be rolled off because it's outdated. And if we're rolling this off, then what can we do with that staffing to create a new, more innovative program? Or plug an intervention need or seed something to go forward. We did some of those things to create the bridge program at the high school, which is the post hospitalization program. We are losing those opportunities. So the house has not been on fire. The continual quest to get to two and a half, we can do it on paper. But two and three years down the line is when you're going to start to eat into your program. So the goal is to ring the bell before you're in too deep. So you can, we can continue to tighten, we can continue to take acceptable losses from year to year. But it's not going to invigorate a growth or charge up a growth discussion because we're just surviving. So any ask you're going to get is going to be that extra pair of hands to help with the twenty-four kids.
To be clear, by acceptable losses, what we mean is, or what you mean is what? Losses that don't impact every child in the district? Losses that people aren't throwing their arms up?
And the extras that we've been able to offer through the years that were not.
But are they extras?
We were one of the few districts that had an elementary for a language option. Were one of the fewer districts. Some of the middle schools have sixth grade. It's not uncommon for it to start at seven. So it wouldn't be our choice. We also think we can do some things to reinvigorate the K six program. So it was something that the hope was you roll it off temporarily. You reimagine it, we realign our, um, our, to the frameworks and we reboot what we're doing. And then you bring it back. We're losing all of the, I mean, if we accept the two and a half, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. But as, the more we accept that, the more we close the door on all of those reimagine and bring back opportunities. Because the enrollment is not going to continue to decline to an extent that it's giving us opportunities to roll people off without impact. You're seeing it at the elementary school. So now that's going to, it's closing down creative ways to find our way forward by taking every available head and putting it into the cookie bank of savings.
And Jake had his hand up and then I have a comment.
I just want to observe that I appreciate the different nature of this conversation than we've had that was last year. In that we're actually talking educational program, not just percentages, which frustrated me all through last year. And so these are important decisions, right? We, we're going to have to wrestle with this. We're going to have to somehow engage the public in, in these in some meaningful way. Because they are, you know, the budget is about the program. If we don't talk about the program, then it's just generic, you know, abstract percentages that nobody wants to support.
And, and to that, so as you were talking Pam, I had a thought, um, you know, to when I first came on, I was exiting, I think it was Caroline and if I recall, this was just before COVID. And so everything went under the bus, but they really had a, a goal to be advocating for the needs rather than being in a, a cut cycle. Like that was what the committee at that time had experienced over recent years and had decided this was a priority for them. Was to actually advocate for the needs of the district based on, on the things they saw then. COVID happened, everything was crazy, and now we're kind of starting from scratch again. When you said, you know, Eric, what I'm hearing you say is you want to hear educators advocate for what they need to accomplish the good work that they need to do. Like that we need to do.
We don't know how to do a budget without being told what, what they need.
And so, so when, when you're, when you say understandably, any ask is going to be eaten up by those efficiencies, right? But we've got this laundry list that we're hearing of people, well, how come you're not doing this, 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 this? What we don't have is people at the table here, we're not hearing that, you're hearing it. You, you get that from the inside track, but we're not hearing, and therefore the public's not either. These are the things we need coming from the educators. They're only hearing it third party investment. We don't actually know all those things. So, so I think volume, the volume of information from that end matters. And you've been so good at managing that balance by bringing in a budget that, that balances the two things. But I think we're in a time where, I know for me, that would be a big help. I want to hear what they feel like they need. Doesn't mean we can give them all the things, but it gives us a sense of their priorities also. And what, what we are actively choosing for or against. Go ahead, Anna.
It's so objective. So of course, everybody want to add whatever they can add if we want to be the best that we can be. But what's best? So without having a measurable outcome, how do we define what's best? How do we know how much to add? How do we know how much to cut? Because for the people that want to cut or maintain a zero percent budget increase that we did this year. Some people might define, we are still excellent school. Some people might define that, oh, it's not good enough. But we need to find the measurable outcome so we can see how we can add things or delete things. Could that be ranking? Could that be testing scores? Whatever that might be. But right now, we're just all talking about excellence and everybody a different definition of excellence.
And I think, you know, I was thinking about what Pam, Pam was touching on the acceptable losses and you talking about the, you know, these how we make these decisions and try to make data driven decisions. I was touring Memorial today and John was talking about, well, you know, it's sad that the library, the lights are off in the library because our librarian is at Essex Elementary. And this is one of those acceptable losses that made sense to consolidate because of the attrition and enrollment. And it made sense to share a librarian between the two buildings, which is a really easy decision, I feel like, at this table to make. And then the unintended and unseen impact of that is that now we have a library that kids. Yes, a class could go in there. He's saying, yes, you know, like teachers could, you know, teachers can bring their whole class down here if they need to. But you lose the opportunity to say, oh, that was a really great question. Can you run down to the library? And ask so and so to help you grab the book about whatever or find, you know? And what is the compounded educational impact of that over your entire elementary school career? Not having the ability to go get a book. And that's authentic learning, Kate. What you just described is the goal of the strategic initiative, right? That you'd be able to build on an experience you're having in a classroom by going to the library, by, you know, so you just described a way that our, our budget cuts directly impact our strategic initiative.
And this is a good conversation to have because we're going to need to push them on how frequently does that actually happen? Is that outweigh, that's where the cost benefit comes in.
Right, and.
Right. Because it's.
But how often, I mean.
Because the person is a teaching.
Because it hasn't been an option in years.
Because they've been teaching. It's a teaching librarian, librarian position. So even if they're in the building, there's no guarantee that they're in the library and not engaged. So I mean, there's a lot of.
Where he's one good example. Like I have a whole test course. I, I'm not criticizing the decision.
I understand what you're saying.
Decision. I'm just saying that there are all of these ripple effects.
I guess I'm more playing devil's advocate because if we could, we talked about today, could we have a TA in there at least to be receiving students and have them toggle back and forth? But that's where we're getting into Anna's point of it's a non-teaching position. If you, if, if it's only a forty percent teaching position and sixty percent of the time is available for an as needed basis. And we're making other cuts, how do you, so that's when you get into how do you justify them and what is the objective standard? I don't think there is a truly objective standard. Because where we are and who we want, I think who the community expects us to compete with academically and post secondarily is different than a community with maybe okay with. So there are some community values late in the.
So I just want to point out, it's eight forty-seven. We are coming up on the end of our time, so we should wrap up this conversation. By perhaps saying, so at our next meeting, so we've, we've started one process, we have created the list of the asks that people have had. We can put some thought to that. And at our next meeting, if we have others that have come to us in between or that we remember, that sort of thing. We can take, then we can add to it, take a look and decide if there are any that are more viable than others that we do want to say, yes, we're going to, we're going to put some energy and effort toward this right away. And, and decide that. But I would also suggest that we set aside a chunk of time, perhaps at the end like this. So that we can have our, our endpoint be the cutoff of the discussion to just continue this conversation. This, we don't have to solve it tonight, but we can continue this conversation. This really is a, a budget philosophy discussion. We're, we're getting there in a roundabout way, but that's, that's what we're getting to in the end.
When do we need a conclusion in the budget process? Like to conclude whatever we need to talk about, what do, when do you need a decision bar? To be able to do, build a budget accordingly.
Oh, we have a budget calendar. And if you're going to give us some explicit direction that is quantifiable or directive in terms of an input. Please tell us that, I would say in.
About October seventeenth, the seventh at the very latest, because the budget's all be into us by then.
So we're going to keep this next meeting, right?
Yeah.
So we've got to tell you.
We don't have time for this. No, but we do have time for this. This is valuable and productive. We do have time for this. So at our next meeting, we set aside the time to continue this conversation. And at that point, if we've come to a point where we feel like we either just want to start with a straw poll, we can give direction at that point to say, you know what? After some continued conversation, we're getting to a point where it seems like we'd really like to see you target this direction.
Or throughout the budget cycle, I mean, we're going to present the tentative budget to you in the first week of, of December. So obviously, we don't want to waste all of our budget preparation time to do a kind of reverse course or something that completely upsets the output car. But if you're saying, okay, now that you've presented this budget, let's just say, for example, to your point of three and a half percent. You know, and or something stable for the program, and now you want to make some tweaks. Well, that's something we tend to do all budget season. But if it's, we want to completely reimagine something that is going to be operationally require a lot of input from the buildings and the principals and the department people, that's a completely different thing.
I do want to have a discussion because we have, you've been kind of deep in end of year report. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the layout of our budget this year and the inputs that I've had, that we should be coming in with the final budget as the tentative budget. Not to lose a complete month of time. So if you're going to want to see variations, I'd like to build them right from the beginning. Because the one piece of feedback that you gave last year was that holding it to the end didn't serve us well.
Yeah.
So if we don't build those right out of the gate, then we're, I mean, the time flies and there just aren't enough hours to recreate everything in the. So I'd rather know what scenarios we're looking for out of the gate.
So why don't we set that as our expectation for our next meeting? That we continue this discussion with the goal to give you direction about if there are scenarios we specifically want to see, that that's the meeting that we do this.
If, if you're looking for an objective measure, just give it thought, you know, I'm not hooked on this number. But the three, three and a half came as the average rate of growth statewide. So if that is the average state of growth statewide, is that an objective benchmark for us to continue to use?
Because you're saying we, we want excellence here, so maybe you should do a little higher.
Well, I think what we've done is we've developed a system of, when we're working at three and a half, we aren't, we are making trade offs. But they're good, they're wanted trade offs. We stopped doing that just pre-COVID. And then coming out of COVID, we're right back to the conversation about trying to get it down because of this, the apportionment imbalance. Trying to get it down lower and lower and low. And as we started going low, multiple years lower than three and a half percent. That started us down the, it's the trajectory that I'm concerned with, not the immediate of starting to peel things off that were just savings and not smart savings or small investments. So that's all.
Understood.
So we can have that conversation and I, that's reasonable. It, it's good for us to have a deadline. So, okay. And no, we are not done. We are done with that discussion. No, which is lovely. And we only have one, one item left. Any school committee comment?
I have a school committee question. This is really the obvious.
Only if you phrase it in the form of comment.
My comment is, this is a comment. I would love to understand because we, we get back to this all the time. We say that, you know, the reason schools grow at around three to three and a half percent is because of three major variables. Healthcare, the teacher's contract and out of district placements grow at a rate usually greater than that. Do we have, and I don't, I know you're in the middle of it, I crunch your antenna number, so I don't want you to. One, I wonder if there's a way without requesting a lot of additional work. Do we have a, some type of graph that could show like a five year trend so we could just see that?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
I feel like this is a question.
Did we discuss this already and were we working on this data? Did we put it on pause?
Yeah, because I thought.
I asked a lot of things in August and then you went into the.
Yeah.
End of year.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
And now you're out, so I'm ready.
I had a schedule that you and I, the answer is yes. And we've already been working on this, so.
I think that will really help also because it can, the, the question comes up all the time. Of course it does. It's like, you know, we, we have circuit enrollment, why do we have increasing costs? And we have to continue to think about how to synthesize that. And the more I understand it, the better I will be able to.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, we have, it's, it's, a lot of the actuals are in the budget, but it can be hard to kind of pull it out in clear visual that Pam and I had started to work on. So great idea and we're on it.
Would it be possible, also, this is a document that I know already exists, that, um, I think it was in the spring, you made that list of what had been cut over. Could you just remove that again?
Yeah, I think we want to add in also some of the big efficiency moves we've made. So when you talk about like facilities and food service, like I've been doing kind of a line by line against Hamilton Wenham's. Admin staff and we are, we're understaffed compared to, non-instructional understaffed compared to Hamilton Wenham. Plus, all of our custodial minus facilities manager, one maintenance and a one custodian are all off book. They're all outsourced and our entire kitchen operation is outsourced. So those, and transportation. So there are a lot of areas where we can show those decisions that were made over the course of the the years, healthcare split also, healthcare split was another big move. And in the O P A, I mean, the O P A is an obligation that is a significant cost every year. That's just going into long-term planning. So.
That was on my list for, for the ideas evaluation.
So yes.
About admin structure that keeps coming up. All right. Any comment?
Yes. One, we don't need to answer this right now, but something to think about is the regional agreement apportionment. That I think is raised many, many times. One party wants to change it, the other party actually, Manchester actually doesn't want to change it. The board and the income. So I think the decision is up to school committee really, right? Because we need to request to have the regional agreement changed.
Is that up to us?
Right. I think that's what they.
But that, I thought we, we have that on our list, yeah.
So I think something to think about is what is our approach? What is our reasoning to both entities when the time comes?
Thank you. Okay, for the, oh, I do have one comment. It's going to be short though. Today, I'm sorry that at the last minute I wasn't made, this is a plug for doing what you can to attend the walkthroughs. It, it makes a difference. It's not a requirement. We can't require our, you know, this is our time and it's difficult. It is really helpful and it makes a difference to the staff to see us in the buildings, paying attention and knowing, you know, what, what's happening there. So it really does make a difference. So the best we can do, let's, let's go ahead.
Is there any flexibility on those times? Because like this, this today, like this. And it was just like scheduled, so I don't know if there's flexibility on.
I just asked the principals to give me blocks, give them like seven dates. And they gave me the ones that they were free.
When's the next one? I'm sorry.
Do you eleventh here at? Though we also have, on the tenth, we have the E E S M S B A visit. So that's a week from today.
That would be the facilities subcommittee. I sent you.
You probably did. Oh, I know it's here. It's in my calendar. I just didn't write facilities.
I can make.
I missed what, what date you said. The eleventh.
Middle high school at ten, the eleventh.
It's understandable.
Do we only have this like once or twice a year?
Yeah. And we didn't actually.
When is the one, when is the Essex Elementary?
Twenty-four.
If you are, um, especially if you are a Manchester rep and you have not done the tour at Essex Elementary. I would really, really urge you to do it. It's, you'll see much further than what you would see if you were to go to town meeting.
Can you send that out?
I'll send meeting.
I will try to make those. I will say like her, she's going to send.
Daytime jobs, these are tough.
Yeah.
All right, I get that. We're close. Kids are here during the, you know, sorry. We'll try to rerun another set of them. It's, it's a lot. You've got a lot of schedules. Okay. We can do an Essex night meeting, meeting at night if people want to see the state of the facility. This is more what you kind of see, like, you know, this is what twenty-five kids in the room look like. This is more what you kind of see, like, you know, this is what twenty-five kids in the room look like and this is how the building flows during the day.
Or you just show me a mystery reader. We're always looking for people.
Any other school committee comments? No?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned at eight fifty-eight PM.
Nobody knows me. My name is John.